We do have four board members in attendance.
Thank you, Ms. Colt Meyer. Appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. The October 14th, 2020 Policy Monitoring Meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors is now called to order. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Present.
Mr. Abarka?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Present.
Mr. Hogan? Dr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Wasserstrom?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for my colleagues, Mr. Hogan has requested an excused absence for this evening. We had already previously accepted that excused absence during executive session, and we will count him excused for this evening's meeting as well. It would now be in order to receive a motion to approve the agenda.
Promote.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this motion? Hearing none. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez? You're on mute. Dr. Jones, thank you. Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda is approved. The first item on the agenda is under policy and governance. The board recognizes Dr. Mark Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that we're asking the board to take action on is the adoption and/or updating of policies to board policy Appendix D ACA, which is the sexual harassment under Title IX. You all received this in your Friday packet.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Are there any questions on the update to the board policy on sexual harassment under Title IX? This is a policy that all board members are required to be versed in and undergo training in, and this is simply updates to that policy. Hearing no questions or comments, it would be in order to receive a motion to approve this policy.
Promote.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing none. This will be a roll call vote. The secretary will please call the roll.
Ms. Manser?
Yes.
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Wasserstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Dr. Jones, are you here? Could you turn on your camera? I don't know if she's here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the business, on the agenda this evening is the superintendent's report. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today on the superintendent's report, Joe, let me just ask you if you could control my four or five slides, and then we may want to pass it over, and you may continue to control it. But we have several items under the superintendent's report. We have the hybrid reentry plan that we want to talk to the board and the community about. And then we have our workshop presentation that will focus on 1.2 CCR and 4.1 student and parent and community engagement and family engagement. So a number of important documents that we'll be covering with you all tonight. So I want to get right into it, and I want to start off around this reopening of schools conversation, and we wanted to provide the community with an update in the criteria that we're going to be utilizing. I know that there's a lot of concern that's taking place right now in the community as you think about the cases and the positivity rates that still exist here in the Kansas City area. So what we wanted to do in our school district was to continue to adhere to how we have operated throughout this pandemic, which that, which was to solely continue to focus on what data is dictating that we're doing. If you haven't had an opportunity to listen to the interview that I participated in earlier this week with KCUR, I shared with those listeners that as a superintendent, it really doesn't matter what decision I decide to go with. Whether I decide that we're going to bring kids back in some form or fashion, we're going to have half of our community members that are going to be upset and half that will be happy. And if we decide that we aren't going to bring students back at all, and we keep them on a remote learning model, we're going to have 50% of people who will be happy and 50% who aren't. And so at the end of the day, what I realized in talking with a number of my colleagues across the country, that it's best practice to focus on what the data is dictating that we should be doing. And so what we've done is we've updated our public school, Kansas City Public Schools gating criteria. And you can see here, we have it color-coded, we have it based on the percent of positive tests that are taking place, and then we also then have broken it down not only by red, orange, yellow, and green, but then we've broken it down based on, you know, what learning would look like, what the school activities would look like, spectating, audience, when we look at some of our extracurricular events, visitor access, and playgrounds. And so what we hope that we'll be able to do with this is to show our community that right now, we're still considered in the red zone, which means that we are only in remote only right now. In the vast majority of our schools, we do have small groups of students that are operating in our pre-K centers in alignment with what they've been doing at St. Mark's in Operation Breakthrough, and that's actually going well with those small number of students that we have taken advantage of that program. We are allowing for athletics to take place at this point. But at this point, we are not allowing for visitors to spectate at our games, so everything is remote. And a lot of that is through the videotaping of our games, and then we're posting those games live stream on our website and our YouTube site. Visitor access at this point because schools are closed, is closed, and then our playgrounds are closed. So then when we move into this orange phase, that will be based on the 14 days of data that we will continue to receive from our health departments that we are in constant conversation with. And that would trigger us moving into a hybrid pre-K through three remote, a hybrid for pre-K through three, and then remote for four through 12, and then you could kind of see how the rest of this would operate. And then as you, as we move to a yellow phase, that would have to be less than 8% of positive tests and continued study or decreasing new cases. And then that would ultimately trigger us to continue to move further into doing more activities in our schools. And then ultimately, one day, hopefully with a vaccine, we can get back to that green phase where we're able to do full-blown in-person pre-K through 12, and that all school activities and everything else would be open. So this is going to go on our website, and this will offer some clarity to our community on how we're going to do it. Next slide. You will also have this document that will be available, we paste, posted to our website. This will be available for our community to be able to review, and it talks further about the KCPS safety procedures. So it still gives you the learning modes, it gives it to you based on the color codes that we've established, based on the positivity rates that are coming in from our health department. And then you can see the number of KCPS safety procedures. These are all of the things that we are going to have in place as we continue to work towards bringing students back. Next slide. So here's our latest data. This too will be placed on our website. So you all will have the most recent data available for the Kansas City Public School District boundaries. And you will not only have it in the aggregate, you will have it based on zip code. Because if you look at the data and you start to say, well, the latest data shows that we're below 8%, well, that's the entire Kansas City catchment area. And also, when you look at Jackson County, that data includes all of the different jurisdictions that are within Jackson County. Well, I know personally that I serve many of the communities that have the hardest-hit areas. And as you can see here, the areas that are highlighted in yellow, all of those areas have a positivity rate of over 10%. So the average is 10.58%. And at this point, based on this current data, it is not safe to bring students back to school, nor adults. And I know that there's a lot of talk about you can bring kids and that you can start with the elementary kids, but I think there's an important factor that we have to also have to take into account. And this is a part of the conversation that I've been having with Rex Archer, is that I think it's important that we take into account that although research is showing that there's not spread taking place in school, but yet the spread is taking place in communities. So then these people who are living in these communities that are highlighted in yellow, well, guess what? Many of those people we also employ. We have a number of folks that are teachers, that are works in our custodial department, school bus drivers, and our food services employees, along with many of our central office people that may reside in various zip codes here. And so there's an adult factor that we also have to take into account when we are making decisions that are also going to impact adults. And I think that it's important that we take all of that into account when we make our final decisions on whether or not we can come back. Next slide. So the dashboard that we plan to put up will inform our families about the presence and risk of COVID-19 in our district buildings and in communities. It will be accessible for every single one. Our goal is to make sure that this is community-friendly, which means that it will be available in multiple languages, intuitive visuals with clear, simple explanations, and will be functional on many device modalities that are available. Most importantly, it's going to be transparent. So when we put this out, you all will have opportunities to have updates on the number of cases in our community, the number of cases that we're dealing with as a school district. That means the number of educators and faculty and staff members throughout the organization and a number of students. We will not put names out, but we will make sure that we are very transparent with our community on where we are. And so we talked about the rates and counts and percentages that will constantly be updated. We will make sure that explanations are easily made, and we provide context in a way that will be digestible to this community. And then we will make sure that we have resources available and links that will allow for our people to understand how you can go and get support as it pertains to COVID-19. So as I close out this presentation, I want to reiterate again to our community, November 9th is a target date that we were looking at to bring back students pre-K through three. But it will only be permitted to take place if the data supports that we can do so. When I look at the data right now, it brings, raises a lot of concern to many of us. Nevertheless, we as a school system still need to prepare as if we're going to have students back on the 9th. And if we aren't going to have students back on the 9th, you will hear that on October 26, we will bring a recommendation to our board based on the recent, the relevant data that we have as to whether or not we feel that it will be safe for us to move back into schools, especially with the younger group of students. And so we will continue to work with our union, we will continue to work with our building principals, we will continue to work with our teachers and faculty and staff members in the organization as we work through the next two weeks to make a decision. Finally, if we are not able to bring students back, I, as a superintendent, have a responsibility to continue to engage my faculty and staff on looking at some of our students that right now we are struggling to make contact with, or that we are struggling, or they are struggling because it's just not working for them on this virtual platform. And I think it's important that we have conversations with all of those folks involved on if there are other opportunities on how we can work with small group of students. That's a conversation that needs to take place with our building principals, with our faculty and staff members, with our union. And we know that we have building principals, and we know that there are teachers that we visited that are interested in wanting to be able to see kids in person. So even if we are able to do this, it may be on a much, much smaller scale than what we were anticipating. And it may not happen right on November 9th, but that's a conversation that I have to have with our faculty and staff. The one thing that I don't want to be accused of is engaging in educational malpractice by not doing anything at all when I know that we have kids that are drowning right now. And I'm hearing these stories from a number of our building principals, and I'm hearing it from a number of our teachers. So that's a conversation that we will have to have and come together on what's going to be the best approach, should we come to that determination that what we wanted to do on November 9th is just not possible, given the data. So that's what I will leave you all with, and we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I really appreciate that. And can you give us a general timeframe on when the dashboard will be available online?
Yeah. So right now, the gating criteria, we plan to put that up, I believe, on Thursday. I think that goes up on Thursday, and then next week, we will put up the data dashboard. Kelly, I don't know if there's a particular day next week, or if it's next Thursday, but that will go up because we're working on making sure that it's interactive and everything that we said we were going to do in this presentation, that all of those buttons and all of that data is readily available for our community.
Thank you.
Correct. And just to add to that, Dr. Bedell and Ms. Manser, so tomorrow, our whole community, all of our parents will receive a school messenger direct communication about this conversation this evening and our plans to make a decision on October 26th for a possible November 9th reentry based on the data. But I'll go out tomorrow with our gating criteria to all of our families and to our staff as well. And then correct, the dashboard will be ready next week. We're working in again the parts right now to make it accessible, multi-language, dynamic content for multiple platforms. That's what we're kind of tweaking right now.
And Ms., and Madam Chair, if I could, I, you know, well, let me let you do this. You're finished asking your question, but before we move to the next report, I mean, for the parents, I just, I want to share something with the parents that are, that have kids in the system right now from a parent's perspective.
Dr. Bedell, I think Ms. Cortez has a question, and then let's see who else has questions. Ms. Wolfsee, Mr. Abarka, Dr. Jones. Go ahead.
Um, I'll go ahead and start. I really have two clarification questions because I think they, they intersect with a lot of the questions that have been directed at us. One is, what are we using as our, as our data sources? And number two, on that 14-day positivity rate, is that a, is that an average over 14 days, or is...
Yes, it's an average over 14 days. The health department gives that to us over a 14-day period. And, and I, and the other question that you said, you have the first question, what was the first question? Them.
What, where are we getting our data from?
Oh, okay. So we're getting our data. I think we're getting it from both Jackson County and aren't we getting it from the, the Kansas City Health Department too? We're getting, so we're getting it from both entities.
Okay.
But that's the reason why we wanted to go by zip code. Because when you look at the aggregate of those two sectors giving us information, it's two different numbers based on who's being tested. So with the zip code piece, it's, that's clear and to the point. This is what the data is telling us it looks like in our boundaries.
Ms. Cortez, do you have any other questions you want to ask?
No, I appreciate the, the clarification.
Ms. Wolfsee, and then we'll go to Mr. Abarka next.
So I just want to be very clear because I have, this is a question I've been getting a lot. On the average, I understand that, and where the data sources are. On the highlighted piece that you showed, the yellow where we had the higher percentages, Dr. Bedell, are we looking at not an average of a metro area, but an average of the zip codes that we serve? Is that the average? Okay, because that's different, and that's not something that's easily identified on the website. So I, meaning the health department's website. So what I think is going to be key here for our parents and just our community understanding is that our dashboard is, is showing that unique average number that, and, and that it's representing the zip codes that we serve and where some, you know, where some of our employees come from. I have one question. I'm sure I'm going to have many with the rest of the people will cover them, so I'm just going to do this one. One of the other questions, Dr. Bedell, that I've been getting from parents when they heard the November 9th date was, you know, they selected distance learning, and actually, many of them, while it's not their favorite thing, they feel like they finally hit a stride, and it's really working well for them and their family. And they were saying, it could be maybe for two reasons, like we go back, let's say in a hypothetical, the numbers decline, and we get to the point where we're back into a hybrid. Do they have to go back, they said, either for, one, they're concerned of safety, or two, the other is working so well, they don't want to disrupt what's working for them? And will they be, you know, just doing the same thing from home in virtual learning? But will they have a choice?
So if they're in the distance learning model, it's my understanding, and Dr. Shepherd, you may want to chime in on this, that we did talk about for the kids where they're having success, were we able to allow for them to continue to do it? The problem that you have with the distance learning model is those kids are already assigned to a teacher of record. And so when that teacher is then working with half of that class on Monday and Tuesday, those kids are going to be working on, on asynchronous assignments that they'll be responsible for in those days that they're not in, and then they'll come in on, on the B day. It's very difficult for us to, what I'm learning from other superintendents around the country, it's very difficult to tell the teachers, you need to teach to the kids that are right in front of you, but you also need to teach to the kids that are at home on this platform. That is the reason why we gave our families options to choose the other program, the Kansas City Virtual Academy, so that, that they, that they didn't have to worry about possibly having to bring their kids back. But I know that that is not, that is not working well in a lot of school districts that's a part of the Council of Great City Schools. And so, you know, parents do have the option that if they want to move into the Virtual Academy, because they don't want to come at all, they, they can still, that option is available. But I think the, the distant learning option is, I think, it's, it's going to be very difficult on our teachers to, to ask them to, to teach on, on both, both sides with the kids that are there, and then the ones that are also at home, and trying to monitor both of those on the screen, and then the kids that are live. Dr. Shepherd, do you want to add to that?
You did a very good job of explaining that. Yes, our parents still have the opportunity. Right now, we have some parents who are actually in the Virtual Academy, and they've decided that that may not be the best fit for their children. We have a process by which they can apply to get back into distance learning if they want to. And then we also have a process by which distance learning can actually apply for virtual. And so we still have that going on. It's not, it's not announced widely. But if they're parents who feel like their kids are not doing well in whatever model they've chosen, we do have a process by which it goes through an assistant superintendent, and that assistant superintendent speaks with the parent, and then they make the determination, along with the principal and the Virtual Academy principal, as to whether or not this is a, an adequate reason for us to make the move. In most cases, we do. And then the child is transferred to their program of choice.
So my, just, I'm going to give you my feedback on that, since I am a parent in this situation. If one child was comfortable going back and the other wasn't because of anxiety or whatever around COVID, are you going to make parents make that child switch out of distance learning and go into virtual if we're back in a hybrid?
Well, we don't have any other choice for that child because how would that child be served? If our teachers are actually serving children who are at school, then that's, that is the reason why we decided to have a Virtual Academy and distance learning so that parents could make that decision right off. If, if you have a child that has anxiety or any other number of illnesses or things that may affect them from coming back to school, they can actually register in the Virtual Academy. But our teachers will actually be responsible for children in distance learning, and they will have a full load of children, four days a week, and Wednesday will be our day for deep cleaning. So everyone will be home, but Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, they will actually have a full load of students that they're responsible for. So they will not be able to serve students who are in front of them and a student who is at home.
So I think I understand all of this, and I understand the reasoning, and I'm going to just say this, and then we need to move on. I'd let my other colleagues go. I think you're going to have a lot of parents that are, this was not clear when they made the decision, and I think we need to poll and survey parents to understand prior to this coming up and becoming, because I think we've got time now. But this is a, this is a thing. This is a bigger thing. So I think my advice would be that we need to make sure that the parents we serve and the students that they're there to advocate for understand fully what is going to be asked at that point when we switch to hybrid. And we don't, I don't want to take up any more time, but I think this is going to become something we need to work on.
Thank you.
Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, so I was trying to not get too lost in this because I think there's some interpretation here. And, and first, I, I think this data is incredible. Dr. Bedell, I've not seen data at this level comparably when it comes to COVID cases. I just wonder, and this is not a question necessarily that needs to be answered tonight, if there's any skew for the zip codes that have a low population. So specifically, as I look at that chart and see 64101, 64102, the populations of those area of people in general, I think are throwing off our numbers a little bit. And so I don't know if, if there's an opportunity there to include, include population, or if that's going to throw things off. I just look at that number and that specific zip code comparable to like 64123 where I live, right? Where it's a highly dense populated area that is producing an outcome that's a much higher overall average. And so I don't know if there's any, any work that can be done there, or if I'm just talking crazy, but I think that that is throwing off some of the average, the overall average because of those low numbers in those areas. The weight of each zip code is unique.
So that's the question. Is it weighted? So we can, we can look into that.
Okay. And then one statement, if I could, I, I think this, this is for parents, hopefully the governors watching and others. The reality here is that it is very clear in the data, the disparity in which communities are affected, right? The black and brown communities are adversely affected. And it is critical that we flood resources in these communities because as I look at some of my zip codes and districts that spread across multiple representation districts, it is, it is so evidently clear that we have a crisis, and we need to address this, right? Obviously, this also goes to show that we're in this all together collaboratively, right? Because our Because our kids over um in in the third district uh will not go back to school because the kids in the first or the second. Um are doing well. Uh this is a collective effort, right? So this is again going back to making sure we're wearing masks, making sure we're not um exposing ourselves unnecessarily in circumstances. Uh this is, again, we're all in this together. Um we must come together and work to fix some of these hotspot areas. Because without it, we're all not going back. So I think that is a critical um component of this data that needs a little bit uh more attention and focus.
Mr. Barca, every everybody is impacted in our school system by these areas in yellow, period. Um because when you look at the fact that we have signature schools. And there are kids and there are faculty and staff members, as I said earlier. That are live in these yellow areas, that's gonna impact all of these areas where they're not highlighted. So you, I mean, you're absolutely right. Every is, we're all in this together and we all got to figure this out. If we ever want to get back into school. Some practices and habits are gonna have to change in this city. Um in order for us to be able to feel that we're gonna be able to to get back into school inside of the boundaries. This this data is real. So that's the piece for me. It's we're hit hard right now inside of these boundaries.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell, and for your comments, Mr. Barca. Dr. Jones, you're, I think, up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So uh to Dr. Bedell, I appreciate um the balanced consideration that you talked about earlier. Um this need to prevent infection, but also not be um not to disregard the other needs of some of the. The people who've been difficult to to contact and engage in virtual learning. Um I've been seeing on um Twitter sometimes and I've been kind of hearing on different platforms, people saying. Being sort of flippantly like, you know, we can re-educate later, but you can't educate anybody when they're dead. So sort of things that have come across as flippant. Um but I want to just emphasize. Um that what we know is that there is a very real risk, people who fall behind now. Um who haven't been able to be kind of contacted or connected. They have a long-term risk of death, of higher rates of death. And what we're seeing now is an uptick in child abuse and domestic violence. Um so these are some of the things that I know we're dealing with uh on the violence prevention end. Um and we're seeing. These things impact the same highlighted areas that you're talking about. So we know. That children are being exposed more to violence now than they were when they were spending at least eight hours in school. So I'm glad that it seems like the administration is considering all of that. And so I want to ask just about, um is there some sort of prioritization algorithm or plan? To determine who gets to be in the small percentage of folks as you consider perhaps bringing back a smaller percentage. Of folks in particularly those who've been hard to reach. Like, is it just gonna be um connectivity and they're hit, you know, how much they've engaged? Or do you feel like maybe Dr. Willis group also has data on? Um who has some degree of household risk or something like that as far as um not just infection, uh but as in. Um how do I put it? Just sort of as a high-risk household for uh other social, emotional and potentially violent issues. So I know that's a loaded question, but you know, this is just. As as I know is for yourself, this is a lot going on um and a lot of things to consider.
It's it's definitely a loaded question. I'm gonna give you an unloaded answer. So here, here's the reality of it, Dr. Jones. We're gonna talk with our principals. I think principals and their faculty and staff know best who we probably should be targeting. Um along with people from Dr. Willie office who's working. I think I have to talk to our principals about their comfort level. With um, you know, the possibility of looking at working with small groups. We know that there are teachers that are already on campus who've been saying. You know, I I'm here, I want, I mean, we've seen that many of y'all, we've walked in schools and we've spoken with teachers. Who are saying that they want kids back, but it, you know, we don't want to force a teacher. Back, given what the data is telling us right now. And I don't think, we also don't want to. Force parents that may not feel comfortable bringing their kids back. But I know there's a number of parents out there that are struggling with this. There's a number of students that are struggling with this. And if there is a way that the school district could look at it, and we've been talking a lot about micro schooling and all of these different things. We talked a lot that even when we were gonna come back on the ninth, if that was possible. That we would take a look at our ELL students. We would take a look at um some of our special ed students, some of those subgroups that really need support. Um but I think that when you look at this data, it is an opportunity to have this deep conversation with our team. Around a smaller percent. So you got a large district in the United States. They got over a hundred and twenty thousand students and they've taken ten percent of their students. And they brought them back. So twelve thousand students out of a hundred and twenty thousand. And I actually, he shared some stuff with me that I that I just got recently that I'll look at how they went about doing it. But they were very strategic and it sounded like it was a lot of involvement with the collaboration of the building principals. Um the union and then also those teachers that will be working with those kids and so. Um but that that is the goal though, to to have these conversations further. Um cause I I do, I have concern about them not being, none of them being back at all. All the way through Ju- January and there's no guarantee that they're gonna even come back in January. There's no guarantee. So I think some of it is us looking at, how can we stress test? On some of the things that we put in place right now with people who are willing to do this, you know. Long as we got the safety procedures in place. Um I I know a lot of systems are looking at that and that's something that we can talk about. I I'll talk to the principals about it tomorrow when we uh get together. But that's a great question.
Dr. Jones, I assume you don't have a second question because I'm gonna go back to Ms. Cortez. Otherwise, okay, Ms. Cortez.
Uh Dr. Bedell, I would, and this is as this is much a comment as a question, just kind of asking that. The next time you brief us, we address this question and that is, you know, I think. The positive and the negative of relying on data is that we need to understand the quality of the data and the context of the data. And the the one of, one of, one of the concerns is understanding. The extent of community testing versus, you know, kind of I'm sick testing. And that drives a lot of variability in the data, right? How many tests are done in any particular period and that drives the rate. So I I would just ask that as we reconvene on this question, and I hope we do before we we announce any final decision. Um that we be able to articulate kind of how we're. How we're either adjusting for or understanding that variability component. And maybe, and hopefully getting guidance from the two health departments that you mentioned about how they're planning to expand community testing. To help us better understand community spread.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. This this data here is is a small sample. And so there the variables of the unknown are so significant. That is, it is very difficult to some degree of certainty to say. That right now, well, it's really ten point five eight percent. Because you're right, most of these people are people who are experiencing symptoms that are going and getting tested. So that is a question that we will have for the health departments. Thank you.
Mr. Wasserstrom, do you have any questions? You will have to unmute. Can you unmute?
There we go. Yeah, I mean, looking at the numbers, I had a cold chill come over me. Because in some of those zip codes, you have over twenty. I think there's one or two, like twenty-three to twenty-five percent of the incidence rate. What's going through my mind is if there's any, any zip code where there's twenty-five percent of the. Incidence of COVID, I don't want people from that zip code around me. I don't care if there's two percent in some zip codes. There's any zip codes with twenty-five percent. I don't think that's safe to be around people where there's one in four that have COVID ready to give me. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Wasserstrom. Dr. Bedell, um there is so much anguish in this situation. And I really, um I appreciate um the delicate balance that you're trying to play. Because we, there is, I think, um a true urgency to bring. Children back safely. There's also a commitment to keep our staffs. Safe and um, you know, and then we are dealing with a situation where. We have a community that hasn't really wholly embraced and adhered to um safe practices. In their daily living that might enable us. So we are in a um not a good spot. And I just want to make that comment and I really um give you my regards for thinking through this really carefully. I I I do appreciate what Ms. Cortez said about the quality of the data and who's being tested and who's not. So I think um we we know that. For some families, the distance learning is working. I'm wondering if we can. To Ms. Wolfsey's point, if we can do some surveying of families to to try to ascertain. For whom is this, who is this working for? And um those who are, you know, understand better a little more. Of the questions or comfort levels of the people who might potentially be back in hybrids. So I don't know if there's any kind of parent surveying that we can do in a a more structured, not just. Sort of randomized, but a more structured um basis. And then um my question would be, have you? Have you looked at, are there models in any of the surrounding districts where there are teachers who are teaching? In a, in the hybrid model, who have students joining them. In the classroom, but joining them from their homes via technology. Do we have any, have we seen any models like that? So they're part of that. Hybrid classroom, although you have some of those students who do not come back physically. But they are brought into the classroom through technology, similarly to how we sometimes do a board. Special meeting where some people are choosing to be home and some are choosing to be in person.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm going to, I I don't, I don't know. I'm going to visit a campus tomorrow. I mean, not tomorrow, but next week to learn a little bit more about how they are running their model. Um all I know is locally, nah, I don't have, I don't have an answer on that. I'd have to talk to some of my colleagues on how they're doing it. Um it, but yeah, I just know that districts, I meet every Thursday with districts like ours. And what I'm being told by superintendents who have already started bringing students back is that it's been an absolute nightmare. To tell the teachers that they gotta focus on the kids that are right there in front of them, the half of the class. And then still try to monitor kids on the screen. It's just not, it's just not, it's not working in those districts.
And um I think my um, my second question is um. Is there, it it seems like um there is a need maybe in some of our. High, you know, sort of the hotspot zip codes. If there was a way for us, and I know this isn't within our control, it requires some community advocacy. But a way for us to advocate to concentrate access to testing and some of those. Um zip codes and even focus on some of the and and really. Focus our outreach to engage testing among our families who are residing within those. High population density zip codes where you're seeing high rates. So I'm wondering if there's a mechanism. And again, I know you don't control that, that's the community advocacy, but I don't know what if that you think that's um maybe a strategy to try to. Instead of such a diffuse testing strategy, which I feel like it's fairly diffuse. In the testing, it's at this place this day and this place this day, but it's not um. I don't know that families are receiving a targeted notification. And I'm wondering what you think about that concept.
Well, I mean, I I'm, look, I'm I'm trying to stay calm here because. Is that our responsibility? I mean, it would, you know, we got health departments. And I feel like we got all these other govern- government entities that should be doing that. Does feel like everything's being powered on the school districts and that's, that's, that's what I told Rex Archer yesterday. I don't think it's fair, fair at all that superintendents gotta take all of this kind of pressure and this kind of stress. And people aren't declarative in their statements on what they want to speak out to the public. So I'm sorry, Ms. Master, I'm not, you know, I'm just, I think there's other entities in this city that need to do more and not put all of this on us. And I don't think that's a responsibility that we should have to shoulder.
I appreciate that. I'm I'm not upset at all. I think there's not a single member of this board that would not agree with you. So um hopefully this message gets out to some of those community leaders because. Um and to our families. I think our families need to understand as well that we are operating with um. Not a lot of guidance and a direct targeted assistance from the individuals who have. Access to the resources and policy decisions. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Barca.
Yeah, um I, I want to challenge the opportunity a little bit more, Dr. Bedell, in that response. Cause I, I think um you are a hundred percent correct, right? I mean, people are shying away and abdicating their authority and leadership responsibility in their roles. Um outside of this board, obviously. Um and it, there is a lot of pressure here. But I think as we um think about how other health pandemics like this um have um matriculated through the years. Um we have mandatory vaccinations, right, within our records that that we require folks to participate in. You know, I I think we do have a tremendous opportunity. Um if that were to be um supported, right, from others? Cause I think you are right in that we we can't do everything for everyone all the time, but we do have a tremendous opportunity to potentially save lives. Uh by engaging our families. And I'm not saying that you're shying away from that by any means. I just think this could be a great opportunity for us to lead again, right? I mean, I think your leadership in in previous scenarios by uh being the first large school district to officially say we are going full virtual. And this is our steps to eliminate um any of the barriers with um digital connectivity. I think thi- these are opportunities for us to lead and I, I agree um Board Chairman answer that this could be another opportunity for us to step up. And start telling the county, this is what we need from you. We need you to fund tests um for us to get back to schools. We need you to um create opportunities. Um that support the efforts that we need to get kids back into schools, because ultimately we all want that. And so I, whereas I do agree that they need to do more. Um I I am not um opposed to telling them what exactly they need to do and holding them accountable if they don't rise to that occasion. Because I think that is certainly something that we can um say, this is definitively what we need to get back to where we need to be for our students and families. And staff and everyone else. Um but um, you know, politically, I I think people will, will have a harder time saying, no, we can't pay for those tests. That you need to get our kids back to school.
Mr. Wasserstrom, did you have a question or comment? I see you're unmuted. Do you have anything you want to add?
Nope, I'll just listen real carefully.
Okay, thank you. Um I know we have lots ahead of us, so thank you, Dr. Bedell. This is really important. I think you've heard some of the things that board members are interested in hearing about, understanding a little more about the the data and and. Other kinds of issues and how we might um think about what we're going to do. And also interesting communication to families. So appreciate this presentation.
All right, the uh next item is the uh workshop presentation. Um and so I'm gonna pass this over to uh Dr. Shepherd, who will conduct the introduction. Uh to our board and participants in this board meeting tonight. Uh we do have a number of slides that we're gonna cover. We believe that it will probably take us about thirty minutes or so to go through the uh workshop presentation. And it does not include questions that our board may have. Uh and the goal is, as we get to the end of each particular section here. We will allow for the board to ask questions of that presenter uh before we move to the next individual. Uh and so it it it, this will take time. It's a pretty, it's a large policy coverage. So we do this once a year and there's a lot of areas in here that are covered. And I, the last piece that I want to share with you all is that um. Many people know what COVID nineteen did to this school district towards the end of the school year. Um with us struggling to find students and to be able to get appropriate data on students. So some of that will be reflected in this report, but we'll be able to share with you what our plans are to address it. But I'm I'm pretty proud of uh the significant amount of progress that we're continuing to make in these areas. But I'm I'm pretty proud of uh the significant amount of progress that we're continuing to make in these areas. Based on the systems that we put in place and we're ready to present that information to you all. So Dr. Shepherd.
Hey, waiting on the presentation. Alright, good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Mansur, Board members and members of the community. Tonight, you will hear us present on policy, Board Policy one point two, which is college and career readiness. If you recall, in the spring, we actually convened a college and career readiness task force. And what we were tasked with doing is coming up with the theory of action and a plan by which we could graduate students from. Kansas City Public Schools College and Career Ready. And our theory of action that was composed by the task forces, if Kansas City Public Schools creates quality. Equitable and innovative experiences using database decisions to close up achievement and opportunity gaps. Then college and career-ready graduates will successfully access and navigate post-secondary opportunities. If you also recall in the spring, we actually gave you one of these brochures, because you have the the end and you have the means. The end is each child will graduate uh college and career-ready with one of the um career clusters. And then also they will have one of the pillars here, which are our market value assets. And you will hear more of that as our team presents tonight. The framework contains our vision for our students as they matriculate through our system. And then on the backside here is a glossary of all the terminology that we use. Um in this, in our college and career readiness um task force. So next I will bring up Mr. Rand and he will talk to you about the data and the accountability as it relates to Desi. And us getting points.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Um, Madam Chair, uh Dr. Bedell, Board, um would like to start off this evening by kind of providing a narrative. Uh really look at where have we been, uh where are we currently and you know, where where are we headed? Um, in terms of where have we been, uh this is basically a very similar presentation to what you all received last October. In fact, slides that I'm gonna share are basically the exact same types of slides that you did see last October. Uh with the exception that they have been updated for our twenty twenty graduates. In terms of where we currently are, uh we're here this evening to share preliminary data with you. Uh, this data is still uh being finalized. We are still submitting appeals and looking through. Uh, making sure that we're getting all of our uh students accounted that needed to be counted. Uh, what's a little different with this presentation this evening than what you got uh last October. Is that um we have a good deal of information for you this evening around our different college and career readiness areas. And we'll really get into more detail about looking at uh some some more uh granular data. As well as sharing goals and strategies uh for what we're doing moving forward. And so that kind of gets us to where are we headed? And I think in the different pieces from each presenter this evening, uh they're gonna give you a really good idea of where we are headed. In terms of our goals and strategies uh for for this school year. Uh, this report obviously is aligned to Board Policy one point two, uh but also want to highlight that it's directly aligned to Strategic Priority Three. Uh from our district strategic plan. Next slide, please. Uh, next, I'd like to share our key performance indicators. Um, our key performance indicators or KPIs are directly from uh our MSIP five uh process, specifically standard three. Uh, our first indicators are basically just looking at our college and career uh assessments. Uh, the assessments that uh we currently use that can apply towards this standard. Uh, we have our traditional college uh in admissions tests like ACT and SAT. Uh, then we have the ACT compass as well as the Accuplacer, which post-secondary institutions use. To kind of place students in classes and deter eligibility uh for credit-bearing coursework. Uh, we also use the ASFAB, um which is a military screening assessment. Um, as well as the ACT work keys, which is a college and career readiness, or I'm sorry, just a career readiness uh assessment. Our indicator four is basically looking at our advanced coursework, that is AP, IB, uh and so forth. And lastly, our indicators five and six are, is just following up on our graduates to see where they are six months out. This slide, I'm not gonna get into in detail. Uh, you, this is basically the exact same slide that you guys saw last year. Um, that really highlights uh what the cut points are for students to earn points uh towards this indicator. Uh, the main thing I want to highlight is that uh if students don't participate, we can't get any points. And that just by participating, uh we can at least earn partial credit uh towards this standard. So now I'd like to look at our preliminary data that's as of October sixth. Uh, this is looking at our college and career readiness assessments. Um, as Dr. Bedell mentioned, you know, our ability to give ACT and the ASFAB last spring. Uh, was, you know, significantly hampered uh by COVID. Uh, usually we take that opportunity to really make sure that we have all of our graduating seniors. Uh, with at least one of these assessments on file. The other thing I'd like to point out is that all this data that we're reporting um specifically towards MSIP, uh this standard. Is based on our graduates. Um, later in this presentation, uh other folks are gonna share. Um, some data around our efforts that we've been doing in these areas. But a lot of those efforts are among our sophomores and juniors as well as our seniors. And so while that might not be reflected in these numbers we're looking at this evening, uh they will start to to filter into those numbers. In the preceding uh school years. And looking at this data, um, I'm sorry, could you go back? Apologies. Uh, you can see that um we're projected to uh decrease a little bit. Uh, as I mentioned, we're still submitting appeals, so hopefully we will see these data improve. Um, but just really highlight that uh the main place where we get these points is ACT, you know, because we do that uh testing each year where we test all of our students. Um, but because of that, that really, really hurt us this school year. And you can see that reflected in the far right bar graphs where we have. A significant number of more students uh not able to to earn points. Indicator four again is around uh advanced coursework, that is advanced placement, international baccalaureate. Project Lead the Way, industry-recognized credentials and dual credit or dual enrollment. Uh, the main thing to highlight here is just being enrolled is not enough to earn credit towards this standard. Our students have to earn a B or higher or earn a specific score in the case of Project Lead the Way. In looking at our data for indicator four, uh we're pretty similar to what we saw in twenty nineteen. Uh, we've seen really good increases uh in our earning points among AP courses as well as IB exams. Um, again, where you aren't seeing uh the increases in dual credit and dual enrollment. Uh, a lot of that is because those students, some of those students have not yet graduated. And so we look to see those numbers improve uh over the next two years as those students matriculate and graduate. And looking at standards, uh indicators five and six, again, this is a follow-up uh on our graduates six months out. Uh, important to note that this is for our class of twenty nineteen. Um, and in order to qualify uh be in any sort of post-secondary education, whether that's two-year or four-year. Uh, post-secondary training or enlist in military service. And in addition, our students that are CTE completers can also be counted towards this indicator if they're placed in an occupation. That's directly related to their training. This is our uh initial data for our class of twenty nineteen. Um, as you can see, after uh jumping up over ninety percent among our twenty eighteen class. Uh, we've dropped back a little um in our twenty nineteen class. You know, a lot of this uh we can control based on how many students we're able to contact. And so as we're moving forward, we're thinking about how can we better uh engage and make sure that we uh catch and capture every single one of our students. In thinking about where we're headed, um our goals for this upcoming school year are really around making sure all of our eleventh and twelfth grade students. Have access to one of these college and career assessments. Another goal is really increasing the percentage of our kids that qualify for that point seven five weight or higher. That is, they're just not getting that point two five by participating, but meeting those minimum scores to get additional points uh towards this calculation. Couple actions that we're doing is we're working with various departments. We've already provided a list of those students that do not have a score on file. So that we can be very intentional about engaging those students, working with them across this school year to improve their skills. And ultimately uh take an in-person test uh next spring. Uh, we're signed, we're currently in the process of signing up for that district choice testing. So that we can o- offer the ACT to all of our students in person on March thirtieth, or if not March thirtieth, there is a makeup date later in April. Um, as well as providing options for uh the ASFAB. Before I transition uh to our next presenter, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any uh questions so far, Mr. Barca?
Just one comment. I I think this is incredibly important that we continue to do these types of monitoring, because. As all the COVID environment has kind of thrown, whether we're in school or out, these things are still critically important. Uh, as we strive for full accreditation. So thank you um for for continuing to focus on all the issues. Uh, and the response of this crazy time.
Uh, Mr. Rand, I think my uh question is, you talked about um you're looking, making sure you're doing the outreach to make. Sure that students have um one of those tests or one of those elements in there uh completed, correct? At the secondary.
That is correct.
So who, um, just from, to help me understand, where does that responsibility um sit? Is that um a building leader or is there someone within a building setting or is that something the district is doing to reach out? I want to know, like, who in that chain of command, who has the responsibility for tracking down that student and trying to. Be persuasive with them, because I'm sure there's some difficulties there as well in trying to secure. Their agreement to participate, you know, where we have some other challenges in engaging students.
Yeah, well, and anybody on the team can jump in as well, but you know, for me, it's a group effort. It's a collective responsibility. That we're all working on this together, that, you know, from the district level that we're providing those lists. And then we're getting those to the schools and that then, you know, it would be for me, you know, a lot more of a personal. Uh, kind of interaction for the school to be reaching out, you know, to those students um and engaging around, making sure that we provide those opportunities.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we move to the next presenter? Okay, I think we can.
Alright, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Andrew Urban, uh who will share some additional information for you all.
Thank you, David. Hello, everyone. My name's Andrew Urban and I'm the Post-Secondary Program Coordinator. Thank you for your time to provide an overview on the current state of advanced placement and dual credit programs in our district. This year, we've added nineteen courses throughout, which is a seventy-nine percent increase over the previous year. Worthy of note is that Central doubled and Paseo tripled their course offerings. There's been four new courses added this year, including Advanced Placement Spanish, Music Theory, Statistics and Calculus. There's also been increases in AP Art, Biology, US History, Government, Environmental Science. Next slide, please. The current enrollment is at four hundred and eighty-five, which is a twenty-two percent increase. And again, of note is that Central has increased their enrollment in advanced placement courses by a hundred and thirty-four percent. And Paseo increased it by a hundred and ninety-one percent. This year, we've also offering um advanced placement courses through the Kansas City Virtual Academy, so that students at home. Who are in the virtual programs can still participate in the advanced placement courses. When we look at the demographics of the advanced placement programs, we can see that breaking it down by ethnicity and gender. They more or less mirror the district demographics. One thing that we could notice though is that there is an underrepresentation of male students. So male students make up thirty-six percent of the students participating in advanced placement courses, while they make up forty-eight percent. Of the overall students in our district. And those losses are coming primarily through two subgroups, which would be four percent Hispanic males and seven percent black males. Alright, when we look at the test scores from last year, there's a couple of things that we should draw our attention to. First is that we increased our qualifying scores from nine the previous year to fifty-one last year, which is a four hundred and sixty-six percent increase. But also important to note is that we decreased the amount of ones that we see. So we're not just seeing that based on Lincoln's numbers, but we're seeing that in the, our neighborhood schools. So as the students are taking more tests, they're performing better. When we break down the qualifying scores, we could see that our targeted approach to focusing on Lincoln's world language has paid off. Which led to thirty-five new qualifying test scores, the majority of which were fresh, or sorry, sophomores and juniors. Out of the fourteen subject areas that we tested, we had qualifying scores in nine of them. But as you could see, we still need to work in many of the core areas to increase scores and. For dual credit, the enrollment increased by a hundred and twenty-five percent this year to ninety students. Through the funding allocated by you as the board, the district now is able to co- uh cover the expenses of all dual credit courses for every student participating. So thank you, and I'm sure the students thank you as well. We're also offering dual enrollment options for credit in our neighborhood schools. Since dual credit is primarily focused on our sign- uh signature schools at the moment. In light of COVID, a lot of our support has had to go virtual, so that includes, what we're planning for is virtual town halls for parents and students to present information. We're looking at virtual workshops for student test prep. Our AP instructors were, received virtual training this summer and were certified by the College Board. All the AP classes have eBooks, which also include additional materials through the publisher. Um, this slide just provides more additional supports that are specific to the IB program, so you could just give those a look over. I think we missed, oh, there we go. And for goals, we're aiming for an eighteen percent increase for our advanced placement scores. So we're targeting sixty this year, and that really is going to come just from increasing the amount of students who participate in the test. So this last year, we had sixty-four percent of the students registered to actually complete the exam. Whereas in the previous years, we typically averaged between eighty and eighty-three. So just by getting those additional students to take the test, we will see an increase. For dual credit, we're looking at a thirty percent increase. We're targeting sixty-five students. And this will come primarily from the idea that the, there is no prohibition of cost anymore. So in the past, a lot of students would opt out of it because they couldn't afford the three hundred and fifty dollars for the college courses. But with that barrier being removed, we're seeing a much greater increase. And for dual credit, we're looking at a sixty-six percent increase for targeting fifteen students. And that will largely come from our neighborhood schools who like the dual credit options. And because the dual enrollment is exclusively virtual this year, it should be a little bit more flexible with their schedules. Where in the past, they would have to go to Penn Valley after school. Now their schedules will allow for them. And we're also looking at increasing more course options in that area as well. So now I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have to the best of my abilities.
I have a question. Uh, last year, I went to a Missouri School Board Association District. Meeting at Park Hill High School up in Platte County. And as often happens, I got lost on my way there and I ended up in the administration building. Rather than the cafeteria where the meeting was being held. On the wall, uh as you walk into the administration building, they had what was labeled a wall of honor. And they had sixty-five students from Park Hill High School. That were being honored with their picture for having scored um over three. On advanced placement test. That year, we had a board meeting in Kansas City Public Schools and we were honoring. Students who had done well in advanced placement testing and we had. And we had ten students, as I recall. And it struck me as a disparity that Park Hill had something like sixty-five. Compared to Kansas City Public Schools with ten. You know, I didn't have anybody to talk to, but since you're a specialist in this area. Do you have any understanding that would explain that apparent disparity?
There's a lot of factors that come into play here. And a lot of this is test preparation and when students are first experiencing these courses. So one thing that we've done as a district, and Dr. Wilson has done a fantastic job with bringing Avid in. So with Avid, we're encouraging these students at a younger age to engage in these advanced courses. That's essential for them to be successful in it later. So in the past, we would see a lot of seniors really were the target. And they would have no advanced classes and then be added to an advanced class junior, senior year maybe. That model doesn't really work. We need to prepare students earlier and stronger. So we need to get them immersed in advanced classes as early as we can. So when, I can't speak to when Park Hill starts their advanced coursework. But it wasn't until more recently that we were really pushing for. An increase in advanced work in middle schools, right? And then through Avid, we're seeing an increase of students taking AP courses as freshmen. And what we're starting to notice is those students who started as freshmen. As they've been going through, they've been continuing to take advanced courses and their grades are increasing. And the one thing with an advanced placement test, I think that's important to note is. Just the exposure to it alone increases the chance that they will graduate, not just high school, but college itself. So what might not necessarily look like glowing numbers immediately. Still has a lot of positive impact on those students' lives. So I think that's one thing that, of course, I would love every student to have it because I want them to not just receive the experience, but also get those free college credits. I do also look and see that the progress, while it's not a rapid. Quick exchange, it's one thing that we've been working on. And again, I think Avid and then just the growth in the schools and the support that we're seeing from the principals in these schools. They're growing these cultures now, whereas in the past, they were isolated classes. And I think that's really important to see that success happen in the schools.
And Andrew, just well stated, man. I couldn't have said it any better, but I think there's another important factor. In two thousand and sixteen, and this is also part of what was reported in some of our audits. We did have some schools that didn't even offer AP classes. So we're in a situation right now where we are building this foundation. Like we're starting to see the results of a system that we put in place. Over the last two to three years, they're starting to churn now. So yeah, that's probably another factor that I want to make sure that I mention.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. I think Ms. Cortez and then Dr. Jones.
So. I appreciate your presentation and I'm excited frankly to see the, the, the. Kind of the traction that the. More challenging courses are getting amongst students across our district high schools. One of my, kind of my question is. Do you see, I mean, we're in this strange virtual world now and. Is that actually an opportunity for some of our students and for how we think about delivery of. Our AP or dual credit courses? Can virtual become an easier, you know, a platform that we use? You know, I hate to say post-COVID, but as we figure out what education looks like. In the future years so that access becomes even, even more seamless for our kids.
I think that's absolutely going to be the case for the people who do it a certain way. If you just wanted to go back to a method of opening up a book and following it through a chronological order. No, it's not going to be successful. But we see a lot of teachers who are using this as an opportunity where they don't. Have the limitations of a physical classroom anymore. So that when we might not be meeting online, you're still working on things at home. So they're moving more towards a flip model of a classroom. Where in the past, a lot of people were very much locked into the idea that you had to be in front of me. And we had to be talking together. I think what we're seeing now instead. Is a shift where it's, we meet when we can. Because we know that our students can't always be on our schedule. All right, a lot of them have jobs or are doing something else, but now we have teachers who are being far more creative. They're creating their own websites even for students to go and access materials. They're using the Google classrooms. The college board itself provides a whole platform with unit guides. It has tests where students can make their own exams and test themselves. So in a sense, it allows the teachers to grow, but it also allows the students to be more prepared for an actual college class where they're not going to have that handholding. So I think, and I know this is a roundabout way of getting at your question. It does provide opportunities for growth in both ways, so long as people are receptive and they're open and creative with what they do. And that has been what I've been seeing so far.
And Dr. Jones, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate Mr. Urban's presentation. I have two questions. The first is more so around whatever the process is by which students can access the AP class. Is it like they just pick it and register or is it a teacher promoted process? Kind of like how it was when I was in school, the teacher had to kind of recommend you for the next level class. And then the other question I have is, what is the messaging? To students around the significance of taking an AP class? So when I look at the graphs, it makes me wonder from a student's perspective or maybe even a parent's perspective. Why would I want to take this class? Like, why is it important for me to take AP? Environmental science or any of the other ones that are available? Do we, I just want to get a sense as to what students are being told about how this can help them in some way.
To the question of access, it's the college board policy that it's a hundred percent open access. So there is no great point, there is no prior or prereqs or anything that you need to have to enlist in the class. And that's our policy as the district as well. Now, in the past, you're right, what I found was that it used to be very handpicked. And I think that was one of those things where we saw the results and it didn't pay off. Because a lot of times, teachers were recommending students based on who they liked. Rather than who was, well, in some cases at least, rather than necessarily who might be the strongest. And what I started doing was when I was looking at students that were up for recommendation. And then comparing them to just students throughout the district. I was finding that some of the students who had the highest test scores at Central Middle. Also had horribly low GPAs. But they were still recommended for advanced classes because they demonstrated that they knew what they were doing and they were probably bored in the regular classes. So we need to move away from the idea of just thinking of it just as a GPA. It has to be a more holistic assessment of students and how they approach these classes. In terms of the messaging, this with COVID is obviously more difficult because. In the past, I would go to middle schools and present to classrooms. I would pull out whole lecture, you know, a whole. Arena full of students and present on that. I can't do that right now. So that's where the virtual town halls hopefully will come into it. And then really, we're going to rely on schools pushing those messages. And as much as we can do as a district, schools also really have to be the ones that take leadership. And take control of their programs and grow. And you know, as I mentioned, when you see Central and you look at Paseo and the amount of growth they've had. It's because they've created cultures where students want to do it. And I'll walk into a school and students who don't even know me will come up and say, oh, you're the AP guy. And you know, sometimes I'll recognize them and say, oh, you were in this class. But I've had other times where it's students who aren't even in AP. And they still know that. So the more I see that in the schools, the more it shows that. There's a deeper understanding of what these credits mean. Not just in terms of I could have a piece of paper, but that. I could shave time off of college. I could have a degree sooner. I could start a career or go on to grad school earlier. And by having those options available, especially at no cost. It makes things really, you know, endless. So. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, Mr. Barca, and remember, folks, we've got. Hours ahead of us, so I hope you had a good dinner tonight. Mr. Barca.
Long responses.
Yeah, first off, kudos to Mr. Madri at Central. That's amazing to see that level of increase at Central for those advanced classes. I wanted to dig in a little deeper about the males who are not having access. So we, what are we doing around that issue to make sure that there's equity and who's signing up for these classes?
It actually goes to the last question in terms of accessibility. When we looked at it in the past, a lot of things were based on GPA exclusively. And when we start moving away from that and look at things like a student self-assessment, teacher recommendation to some extent. We could have things now that we didn't have in the past, like I-ready and multiple test scores. GPA, prior experience in the course, those are all factors that can be part of it. And through using multiple points, we could identify students better. And while it might not necessarily increase male access exclusively. So far, we've, we're seeing that in every school. Because we could go and break it down school by school. There's more males participating in advanced placement as the years go by because we moved away from just being tied to a GPA or teacher, teacher recommendation. So we haven't reached the, you know, a perfect equilibrium with our district stats. And the student participating stats, but we're nearing it each year.
That's great to hear. The only other thing that I would say is. That parent education on how critical and available. We make these dual enrollment classes are, is so incredibly important. My, my parents had no idea that dual credit access meant that I had less to do in college. Nevertheless, the fact that we are paying for a hundred percent of these fees. So I mean, I, I'm thinking the greatest pyramid scheme that we can sell to parents in this scenario to give them free college credits. Let's, you know, free access to college, there's just, that is a tremendous opportunity. And kudos to Dr. Bedell team, previous board members. That is incredible that we do that. And I just hope that we are doing some level of parent engagement to talk to them about how important and easy this is.
Thank you, Mr. Barca. Dr. Bedell, we'll turn it back to you for the next.
Hey, we got to get the screen back up and Andrew, I think, is it Christie?
Right, up next is Dr. Christy Harrison. She'll present on the Early College Academy, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I am going to talk to you about the Early College Academy. The Early College Academy is a program for our eleventh and twelfth grade students to earn their high school diploma. While they're working towards their Associate's of Arts degree or their sixty college credit hours. They do that at MCC Penn Valley. Go on to the next slide. We look at our student enrollment data, we are averaging about a hundred students per year. We did take a slight dip in our enrollment this year and we do have a plan to address that dip and we'll share that with you in our goals. You can see that data broken down between our eleventh and twelfth graders, then also between our male and females. And you can see how we have broken down our, how the Associate's degree has been earned over the last two years as well. We look at our ethnicity data over the last three years. Our data pretty much mirrors the district's demographics and has held pretty steady, but pretty. Equal representation of our district. We look here, we've provided a breakdown for you by school. And you can see that over the last three years, we've had representation from each of our high schools. Well, some of the high schools definitely are sending more students than others. We do have a plan to provide students with support so that all students are able to access the early college program. And we'll share that with you in our goal section also, but you can see here our overall enrollment. And then you can see it broken down by each individual school. Next slide, please. So as we look at our high school. I think mount or here, when we look at our enrollment data and the impact that we've had on our enrollment data. I told you we took a little bit of a dip and some of that dip had to do really around COVID. COVID really, really impacted the Early College Academy this year because MCC did close down. And it continues to be closed this year. So as we look at that, we had students who were not able to get into the campus to test. And because of that, we did extend the application window by an additional month. Allowing students additional time to get in and then giving them additional. Times, additional opportunities to get in there and take that test so that they could test in even on a probationary status. So that did help increase our enrollment, but still didn't get us back up to our hundred students that we traditionally have. We're hoping that we'll combat that with some of the strategies that we're putting in place this year and providing students some additional supports throughout the schools. Students who are interested in the program, also we had a little trouble contacting them after some of the quarantine issues. But ultimately, we had several students who decided that going fully online with a college. Program was just too much in the middle of a pandemic for them right now. And so MCC is still online and has no intention of returning. So I can understand how that might be much for some of our students. Next slide, please. We look at our graduation rates, we've held our high school graduation rates steady at a hundred percent of our students earning their high school diploma. We look at our Associate's of Arts degree for the last two years. We have eighty percent of our students in eighteen nineteen earning their Associate's of Art degree and seventy-six percent in nineteen twenty. We had a couple of students there that we dipped down. Those students are finishing up at a four-year institution this year and we're following up with those students. We do have a goal of eighty-five percent of our students completing that Associate's of Arts degree this year. Next slide. We look at the goals for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. We still want a hundred percent of our students to earn that high school graduation diploma. We want a hundred percent of those students to apply to post-secondary or trade school. We're looking for eighty-five percent of our students, as I said, to earn that Associate of Arts degree by the end of their senior year. And then we have put quite a few things in place that are goals for us also to support our students. So we're going to move up the time that we provide our virtual information sessions. To November and December for our tenth grade students so that we can increase that interest. And we can start getting students ready earlier. We also have partnered with our high schools a little bit more extensively in providing them some. Preparatory videos and activities for students to be ready for those college placement exams. For the Accuplacer ACT and the things that are required for them to get into MCC. We're also working on our website so that there are links there so students can directly go to the website and they can start practicing. They can click on Accuplacer, they can get the prep material themselves. There's some practice tests in there they can take, they can look at ACT, they can get to Missouri Connection, some of those various things that we use and that will support them. We've partnered with some outside agencies that will provide supports for our students. One in particular, the Hispanic Scholarship Foundation. We're utilizing these to provide our students with some supports around FAFSA and college scholarships. So we're really excited about where we are headed. I'll just take a moment here if you have any questions for me and the Early College Academy.
Thank you. Are there any questions about, about the Early College Academy? And the status? Dr. Harrison, I think we're good and appreciate that information. Is there, I'm just taking a quick look. Nope. I think we are good.
Then I'll turn it over to Dr. Daryl Davis.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Manzer, members of the board. My slide is really quick, just want to have us. Engage in a dialogue if someone, there we go. All right, so when we look at our programs through an equity lens, we've. Checked for our demographics to see that it mirrors, you know, our enrollment across the district. You heard that from Mr. Urban as well as Dr. Harrison. But as we continue to further explore this from an equity lens. We not only want to see who's currently benefiting, but also who's not benefiting from the way things are. And so as we look at our numbers, we do see that not every student. Quite is accessing or being able to engage in these high-quality learning experiences. And so we believe there's opportunities to examine our practices to see if we're putting up barriers to students with IEPs. Or students in our ELL program to accessing these programs. And so we will continue to further flush out through an equity lens to make sure that all students are able to benefit. So that we ensure that all of these programs are inclusive. through an equity lens to make sure that all students are able to benefit so that we ensure that all of these programs are inclusive of the totality of students that we serve. And that concludes this slide. There are no questions. I will turn it over to Dr. Shepherd to take us through our Avid.
Dr. Davis, very quickly, I appreciate. I just wanted to say that was one of the questions I think that I had maybe submitted early pre this meeting. I think that it, it so much of tonight's presentation hits me that this is a lot about parent education. We've heard that from several board members tonight. And so you've got sort of additional needs and obligations around families who are non-native English speakers, who are new arrivals. And I think I'm not asking for an answer today, but I think this is going to involve a whole lot of different types of strategies. Might even, may, maybe even some of our community partners who tend to be community liaisons to those families. But I appreciate and I'm grateful that you are looking at that. And I, it's going to require some other levels of intervention and engagement, I'm sure. So that's just a comment and thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Marla Shepherd to discuss our Avid framework.
If you recall, early on, we discussed the, our strategy for graduating students who are college and career ready. And what you'll hear now is our strategies to improve. And one of our major strategies in the district is Avid. And we brought Avid here, this is the third year. So we bought Avid here two years ago so that we could increase rigor and so that we could expose our children to college and career readiness so that they could matriculate through our system and graduate with one of these market value assets and be again, college and career ready. So he, now you will hear from Dr. Jermaine Wilson and he will talk about our Avid program and the progress that we've made in the Avid program.
All right. Good evening Superintendent Bedell, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, I'm excited to be sharing data with you on the Avid program, which stands for Advancement via Individual Determination. And it's one of our college and career readiness strategies being implemented. If we can move forward to the next slide. As Dr. Shepherd said, we're currently in our third year of implementation and the program outcomes are to help our students develop the skills needed to be successful in both our secondary schools and also helping to prepare them at an earlier age for college-level work. One unique and important note about the target population for Avid is that our students in the program are traditionally in the academic middle. So the program is an effort to push them towards higher levels of academic success, thus helping us to work towards closing the achievement gap. The core instructional framework of Avid is WICER and last year we talked about that. Writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. These pillars create the academic support for the students in the program. And it's conjoined with a variety of social emotional supports as well as college and career exposure to help students that are in the Avid program to really solidify viable pathways for their future career endeavors. We had seven schools in our first cadre in 2018, 19, and it involved our pilot grades of Avid eight and Avid nine on these campuses. One of the reasons for that, it was critical for us to think about these grades as our middle school students that were in Avid that first year would then be bridging into their respective high schools. So we wanted each point for those schools that were involved to have a group of students that can matriculate and really get the benefits from the program. Additionally, because of the success with Avid implementation in our first year, we were granted an opportunity by the Bond Foundation to continue to expand the program. And so we added cadre two, which consisted of two additional secondary campuses and three of our elementary campuses that you see listed. During the 2019, 2020 school year, we also added our Avid seven and Avid 10 elective courses. And this school year, we've grown into the Avid 11 elective course, which is an important year for our first group of Avid students as we really helped to push them to get their college requirement benchmarks before they finish this school year and enter into their senior year. So on this slide, I want to share with you some of the data for Avid that we've been collecting. So the first data graph that you see provides a depiction of the success of Avid by way of our program enrollment trees. We began at the end of 2019 with 167 students in the Avid program. And it's almost tripled by our current enrollment of 449 students. Those 449 students are across all nine of our Avid secondary campuses and also our Kansas City Virtual Academy program. The second graph that you see shows some comparison data points looking at grade point average and attendance rates. So the blue bar demonstrates the average core GPA for students in similar grade spans in the district during that year. So by core GPA is figuring composite grade point average of our students in English, Math, Science and Social Studies courses. The gold bar that you see is the average core GPA for our students participating in Avid. So you'll see both here, our students experience academic success in their core classes. And we believe this is because of the foundation and support structure that Avid helped to provide. Our attendance for students in Avid held at 91% across both school years, which is a point of pride for us because many of the students, when they entered the program, they were struggling with attendance, academics, and in some cases, behavior as well. So you heard Mr. Urban talk about access to advanced courses. And you heard Dr. Shepherd mention the power about really helping students to access rigor. So one of the most powerful components of the Avid program is helping students to understand that with the right amount of support and motivation that they can persist through challenging courses and they can be successful in advanced level coursework. So I think one of the questions that came up earlier around, how do we help students to change that? I think it's around helping them to have experiences where they can learn if they can do it. We require that all of our students that are in the Avid program to take a challenge course or a course of rigor each year. It not only helps us to advance equity across the district, but it also helps to change the trajectory of the students' lives by way of course access. So many of our AP and pre-AP students are a part of the Avid program and they have experienced success. We know the research shows that when students experience a course of rigor and they do not receive a failing grade, that they're more likely to engage in more rigorous courses during their high school tenure. On this slide, what you'll see across the two years is the amount of students that had access to courses of rigor or challenge courses. And so included in courses of rigor are our middle school advanced courses as well. As Mr. Urban said, we started with our middle school students to really help them to have that exposure so that when they got to high school, they understand the value of taking pre-AP and AP courses and how it will impact them in the future. You'll also see students that have had access to AP courses, our pre-AP courses, our project lead the way courses and our career tech ed program courses, which are all considered to be courses of rigor. You will see that we've had zero students that have experienced IB courses. And that's just because the Avid program has not yet expanded into the Lincoln College Prep Program at the high school. So as we continue to push forward with success and helping our students to be more prepared for college and career, our Avid program this year has really shifted to work with our students and our teachers on the new Avid College and Career Readiness Framework. And the framework centers around three primary success factors for students. So rigorous academic preparedness, so making sure that students have access to rigorous courses, but also the academic skills that they can be successful in those courses. Opportunity knowledge, so that exposure to college and career, setting goals and making choices is a huge component for our kids. And then the last is student agency, so helping students to really believe and activate their potential. One of the key components to the Avid program, it starts with the wheel of students to want to be successful and to begin talking about what things they see for themselves in the future so that we can provide them support. So it's our goal that if we are able to fulfill our CCR requirements through the Avid program, we're also able to help students to be successful, not just in the Kansas City public schools, but also in life. Next slide, please. So our goals for this year is to make sure that all of our students in the 11th and the eighth grade are all taking the right courses of rigor. And particularly for our 11th grade students, because we message for them and their parents, the goal is for them to have obtained college credit by the time that they graduate if they participated in the Avid program. So we want them to continue to take those advanced courses and to really experience success. And we also want that for our eighth grade students so they're learning that that's the expectation at an early age. Also, Mr. Rand mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the importance of making sure that our students have these pre-collegiate exams on their record. So in Avid, not only making sure that they've taken the exam, but we've also provided them the support to be successful by way of practice assessments, test prep, and really helping to build student confidence up when they take the test. And so for this year, we'll be making sure that all of our 11th grade students are taking at least one pre-collegiate exam. And then also all of our seventh and eighth grade Avid elective students, making sure that they also have access to pre-collegiate exams that's developmentally appropriate for the middle school level so that they start to have some baseline indicators for assessment and we can further support them. How we'll do that is we maintain course audits and data tracking for all of our Avid elective students. We'll also be working with the Department of Equity and Innovation for ACT prep assistance for those Avid 11 classrooms. And then just working with our research and accountability department to help out with assessment dates, windows, and also ordering those exams. So if there are any questions about Avid, I would be excited to answer those for you.
Dr. Wilson, thank you so much. It's amazing to see how this program has grown. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we receive substantial philanthropic support to assist with the introduction and launch of this program? Well, you, you have grown it tremendously and I really appreciate that. So I will ask my colleagues, what questions do you have regarding the Avid program? Ms. Cortez? You're muted.
Yes, I couldn't get to the button. So, Dr. Wilson, if you could share with us what, what types of, just very briefly, what types of adaptations have you had to make to effectively engage your Avid students in this virtual world?
I think the biggest thing has just been adapting all of our paper applications into electronic forms to make them accessible to our parents. Note taken, a lot of our students were used to taking notes in binders and notebooks. And so to changing over into e-binders and making that transition, the kids have picked it up really fast. But I think that's probably been one of the largest learning curves we've had since we've been in COVID.
Thank you. Are there additional questions? Dr. Wilson, I appreciate it. Thank you so much and I appreciate this very focused endeavor. And it is definitely an enormous benefit to our students.
Thank you. I now like to, in an effort to continue to push forward college and career readiness, like to transition to our new college access coordinator, the fantastic Mrs. Joyce Nguyen Hernandez.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wilson, for that intro. Hello, my name is Joyce Nguyen Hernandez. I want to thank Superintendent Bedell, Madam Chair Manser, members of the board and members of the cabinet for inviting me to speak today. I'm in the new position of College Access Coordinator in the Department of Equity, Inclusion and Innovation after working with high school seniors for the past 20 years and, and most of those years spent at Lincoln College Preparatory Academy. In my department, I'm working to build supports for a greater number of KCPS students to increase access to college by ensuring that they directly come across multiple entry points and offer as much exposure to college options. I just want to provide a quick overview of the slide. As you can see, there are many tasks listed. I just want to speak on a few. Quite frankly, we don't want our students to rely on luck or prayer as our only safety net to make college a reality. The department's goal is to reduce barriers for our students, especially first-generation students, so that they can earn college degrees. I wish to convey some of our equity initiatives, especially in this challenging era of COVID. Our school district counters some of the stress of this high-stakes testing by increasing opportunities for our students to sit for exams, for free exams. One way we do this is by sharing the recent news that the ACT organization has increased the amount of fee waivers from two to four for our low-income families, all provided by the testing organization for free, which counselors can now distribute digitally for our students. ACT even furnishes free online test prep tools, which will demonstrate to how to employ with instructional videos. If KCPS effectively communicates this to our families, we reduce the financial burden. Often they're spending $55 to $70 each time the entire test is taken and perhaps more savings happen for them for the test prep. It's also significant to communicate that students can officially this year just take individual subject areas, which diminishes their test anxiety and time spent for test preparation. As you can see in another bullet, the purpose of launching the KCPS college website this month is to share an open and accessible scholarship resource from home or school or at any time of day. It's a robust list for our stu, for our students from all walks of life to connect their participation in academics, extracurriculars, service and leadership, which elevate them to the next level by financing their post-secondary plans with scholarships. Finally, we have valuable allies partnering with KCPS. And I'd like to acknowledge just a few, like Mizzou College Advisors, the Hispanic Development Fund and Beta Lambda Educational Institute, who are helping our students by meeting one-on-one with them using our district-issued devices, reminding students to attend virtual college fairs, coordinating visits with college representatives, offering additional test prep in a virtual space, and even, even guiding families with their forms and the financial aid process in, in the same creative manner. I want to thank you for your time and I look forward to working with the board, all of the departments present tonight, and hope to further the educational goals and journeys of our students. And I have time for questions if you'd like.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nguyen Hernandez. I know you know this work inside and out, so I know it from personal experience. Do any of my colleagues have questions in this area? Mr. Barca?
Just incredible presentation, Ms. Nguyen Hernandez. Thank you for all the hard work that you're doing here and, and congratulations on your new role.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Dr. Bedell?
Oh, I guess we're moving it over to.
Well, I, I'd like to introduce Christopher McNeil, Director of Career and Technical Education.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you so much. I apologize. My, my microphone was muted. Thanks again to Dr. Bedell and Board Madam Chair Manser and also the, the board members. My name is Christopher McNeil. I am the Director of Career and Technical Education. I am over the moon excited and humbled at this unique opportunity. For me, I joke about and said, this is my slumdog millionaire moment. My life experiences leading up to this point has brought me to this place just starting my career off in current technical education as a teacher, starting at, at Central High School and then moving throughout the ranks and then subsequently moving here as the Director of Current Technical Education. So again, I'm really excited about this opportunity to serve and, and that's exactly what we're doing. So we'll go ahead and advance to the next slide. So for us, our current, current technical education department, if you look at how we're serving our students, I want to kind of break down the, the cluster areas. And so they will be business, marketing, information, technology, health and human services, industrial engineering and technology, natural, natural resources and agriculture. Next slide. So as you know, we're really excited about our, we applied for and was awarded the Call from the World of Learning grant to really increase our MBA, our students' MBA attainment, which here includes work experiences, college credits, industry-recognized credentials and entrepreneurial experiences. And so what we wanted to talk about and looking at. And so what we wanted to talk about and looking at, giving one example of Health and Human Services Cluster, but the health sciences and biosciences pathway, our goal, and I'll kind of talk through one of our strategies is is that that embedded market value attainment along the pathway, right? And so again, like Mr. Hernandez said, it's all about hope and wishing is not a strategy, but if we embed those opportunities inside of our pathways, that's the sweet spot for us. And so this is an example of the way that we're going to embed those opportunities there. So I want to highlight some of the strategies, and I really alluded to one is that embedded market value attainment along the pathways. Then there's that expanded and streamlined, of course, offerings at secondary schools. Then there is the increased virtual remote learning experiences, excuse me. And so just really want to talk about how we, the the goal around strategies for improvement, for expanding, I'm sorry, and streamlining. And so we look at across the district, although CT is the kind of the association has historically been just with main technical education, but our reach is far more beyond that. Again, looking at those cluster pathways, and we have a CT representation impact across the district, so that's all the middle schools and all the high schools as well. And so we want to streamline our approach in terms of that we can get those right market value assets, those industry-recognized credentials. Here's what's happening, and here's what we're finding, is that we have a number of students, a number of course offerings that we provide to our students at the secondary level, particularly looking at business education, which accounts for about eight hundred students at that secondary level. The problem is we're going wide and not deep, and so when it comes to the IRC attainment, that's where we're missing the mark. And so that's where the goal is in terms of that alignment of what we're teaching, along with IRCs that we're going to deliver to the students, so that alignment piece is really critical for us. So our goals, again, is each pathway will have an appropriate and aligned industry-recognized credential and/or TSA, increased attainment of industry-recognized credentials, and then dual enrollment and/or accredited opportunities along our each pathway. And so then I will turn it over to our world learning coordinator, Mrs. Crystal Everett, who's going to take us to the end of the presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. McNeil. Crystal Everett, I've been in this role as Real World Learning Coordinator for about a year, but definitely no stranger to many of you who sit on the board, so it's great to be with you all in this capacity here. And so Mr. McNeil already kind of teed up the examples of the market value assets. So again, we are very excited about the two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that we've been awarded as a school district to advance real-world learning. And so as we were pulling together that pitch and really doing a calibration of where we are with real-world learning, we found that about thirty percent of our seniors are leaving our system with at least one of those market value assets. And so as we put forth goals to continue to have access to that funding, we are working on increasing that to about forty percent. So that leaves us with a little over three-hundred-and-fifty seniors who, again, we will work to make sure that they achieve that market value asset. Next slide, please. And so again, when we we talk about market value assets, you all have seen that college and career readiness graphic. And so it's definitely been described as kind of the icing on the cake. We've been doing a lot of these things specifically around industry-recognized credentials and dual credit and dual enrollment. And of course, those get us those points towards accreditation. But we also still want to offer some of those other market best, I can't talk, market value asset experiences. And so if you talk to any given student, you know, pre-COVID or during COVID, if you ask them what a market value asset is, they probably wouldn't be able to tell you, but they can certainly articulate an internship experience or, again, the dual credit and dual enrollment opportunities that they have. So you see here some outcomes that we have for this year specifically around market value assets, wanting to make sure that our students understand the language in administering surveys through a variety of means to help them understand what these opportunities are as they matriculate through our system. And so you can see the numbers progress as they as they get older, hoping that or with the goal, we, again, we're not we're not rolling on hope, we're rolling on things that we can touch and feel. And so as students are in their junior year, seventy-five percent of them will be able to at least have a plan for attaining that market value asset or will have achieved that. And so we have a couple of examples that we've already been able to implement even in this virtual space. And just a note here, with the implementation of that college and career readiness course in eighth grade, we know that we'll be able to definitely attain that goal because we have those students already in a very specialized course around college and career readiness. Next slide, please. So some some examples of what we have going on specifically with Real World Learning and Client Connected Projects. This is one that I'm personally excited about. Today, we we had students record the first of the four Life Skills webinar series. And so due to some some technical difficulties, we decided that these sessions will be recorded. But we identified ten life skills leaders that represented the majority of our high schools. And those students are juniors and seniors, so they are working on completing a client-connected project. They're the ones earning the market value asset, but they're having this really unique opportunity to to interview panelists. We were very specific in identifying KCPS alums who will participate as panelists in this, as well as we have our parent addition coming up where we've already tapped, we'll say Robin first, Robin Bedell and Dr. Bedell as panelists, along with the CEO of Community America. So again, just these really unique opportunities for students. And so the students who do watch all four of those webinars over the course of the next four weeks will earn twenty-five dollars sponsored by Community America. So again, they've been a great partner in helping us pivot and really kind of really think about what these client-connected projects look like. There is a separate client-connected project. We have identified one of our marketing teachers at East, as well as another CTE teacher at Central High School. And so their students are really going through a process of figuring out. We know that young people have an interesting relationship with money, and so they are developing a project and being able to present strategies to the Community America leadership about how to make that better for students in the future. Next slide, please. So again, some some strategies around real-world learning, I mentioned about how we'll engage students. Teacher recruitment is very important in this process as well. As much as we have a chance to engage with community partners, we know that we can't fully implement a lot of these strategies without teachers. So our team, well, specifically, our CTE team is working more closely with CIPD because they do have more access to teachers and wanting to help them understand how we don't want this to be in addition to what they're doing, but really just a compliment to what they're already doing with their students and even in their classrooms. Back to Mr. McNeil's point about making sure that we have that alignment of MBAs with each pathway. So again, students can see that clear path from elementary, middle school, and all the way through graduation and beyond. So as we think about back to that forty percent goal specifically around our seniors, we'll have all of our CTE programs complete a client-connected project for this year. So we know that that particular market value asset is how we get closer to that goal for for this particular school year, especially in this space. Next slide, please. And so just to wrap it up, we've talked a lot about making sure that our students leave KCPS college and career ready. And so this story may be familiar to you all. Nathan was identified as the first high school student in the nation to complete the wastewater management industry-recognized credential back in November. And I remember being there. He was super excited. We all had a chance to to watch him open his envelope. And so he just started his role as a water operator with the city of Kansas City just last week. So making about twenty-two dollars an hour. I'll let you all do the math there. But really, when we talk about students being college and career ready, being able to take those industry-recognized credentials they get from our district and be able to push forward, this is truly that culmination. So with that, I can take any questions about real-world learning, and I know Mr. McNeil is available for CTE questions as well.
Ms. Everett? With respect to accreditation, you know, they have this formula of a hundred-and-forty points, and we have to get a certain percentage of the total points, and bingo, we get accredited if the state says okay. So how does that work with this market value? How many points do we get in that category? How's it broken down in terms of absolute finite achievement versus growth? The growth metric sometimes gives you enhanced points. And is the state being generous enough? Are they kind of shortchanging this on the weight that they give? And should they be giving us a few extra points to help us reach accreditation based on the great work we're doing on market value assets?
I could definitely start with the question. I'm going to call on Mr. Rand to to help be on the back end. But specifically with the market value assets, so the industry-recognized credentials and the dual credit and dual enrollment opportunities are the ones that we actually earn those points. So when we talk about work experiences, whether that be client-connected projects or internships or even those entrepreneurship experiences, those have been identified around regional language with Kaufman Foundation in partnership with businesses and organizations here. So we know that it helps students as they prepare for the workforce and for post-secondary education, but it's just those two particular components that we know help us to reach that accreditation goal.
And that would again would be that standard three indicated four area for us.
Yeah, I think Crystal did a pretty good job of covering it, that it, yeah, it will specifically be around those recognized credentials as well as the dual enrollment and dual credit. And yes, those will go a long way to really helping in those indicators.
And Ms. Everett, my question is regarding, what what is your process of identifying the client-connected projects? Where what is your pipeline and how do you develop that pipeline?
Well, it's still, I would say, being developed. There's a number of businesses, organizations that want to specifically work with our district and with our students. And so just being a part of that first cohort of school districts with Real World Learning and the Kaufman Foundation, we just have these continual opportunities to connect. Even this morning, I had a chance to talk to the Real World Learning Executive Committee, so made up of leaders from a number of organizations. So just being able to let them know where we're at, what we're doing. As you can imagine, developing a client-connected project can be a pretty intense process in Community America. I think they're kind of leading the way right now because they really had a chance to pivot in light of COVID. So basically, what we're doing with the Life Skills Webinar Series and that client-connected project around financial literacy, they already had developed. So for us, it was just identifying the teachers and then just, again, with the process of the life skills leaders, making it very specific to our school district, just facilitating that process. But with the client-connected projects, the requirement is that students participate in about twenty-four hours of work, and four hours of those have to be engaged with the client. So just making sure that there's some synergy. Many people maybe don't realize what it's like to work within a school district. And so as much as they want to support us, so maybe we, if they want to do something simple, we push them to utilize Nepris and the connector to just say, hey, this is what I do, this is my role. But for those who really want to take some time and work closely with our students, then we help push them towards that that client-connected project process. I can't talk client-connected projects, but it is kind of, again, making sure that we have a lot of synergy between teachers, even building administrators, and then also that that organization who has to at least tell us what kind of problem they want solved. So it's it's a process.
Thank you. Are there other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes that first part of our presentation. The second part of our workshop presentation is on four-point-one, Student Parent Communication and Engagement. Kelly Waichu is going to go through this presentation on snapshot of our marketing plan, marketing and recruitment plan. So Kelly, I'll pass it over to you.
Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Board Chair Manser, and board members, community members, families, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We're excited to go through this presentation with some brevity, seeing that you've had a healthy presentation just now. So we're going to walk through our Marketing and Communications Comprehensive Plan. Just for a little bit of context for you and for the community, we have provided the entire comprehensive marketing communications plan to the board, and you have the document with strategies, tactics, all of the specifics that our team works on on a daily basis to meet the goal of increasing enrollment, engagement, and branding reputation management for KCPS. So as we go through this, please note that I'm going to be very brief, talking about our goals and our marketing communications plan, but then we'll answer some questions in specifics if you guys have those throughout the course of this presentation. But do want you to note that Board Policy four-point-one is being addressed here. And Board Policy four-point-one also gets rolled up into the overall marketing communications plan. So note that four-point-one has some specific line items in it, but we address all those in the comprehensive plan. So one of the things that we look at when we create these comprehensive marketing communications plans is research. The overall process is research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. So as we looked at research with you as a board in our community through Blueprint twenty-thirty, through Hanover, through Mass Insight, we've used that research to help create our plan. And these are some of the key bullet points I wanted you guys to take away from that research and essentially looking at the factors that drive local families' decisions around school choice. We know we're in a competitive landscape here in KCPS, and we need to help tell the story of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going as it relates to competition and the performance and experience in KCPS schools. So these are specific strategies and tactics that our plan addresses. Really want to emphasize on this slide, just the items that you see here, talking about meaningful engagement, talking about marketing and recruiting efforts, and then looking at public relations campaigns that support all of the goals that we want to support with increased enrollment, family experience, and engagement. Overall, in our plan, we want to focus on the fact that consistency builds culture. Culture and performance increase enrollment. I want us to really think about our plan and our tactics in this vein and in this theme. When we can have strategies that focus on consistency and the culture within our schools that we then portray and exude to the outside public, we're making sure that the experience reflects what's really happening in our schools to recruit, retain more students in our family, more students and families in our KCPS system. The key messages that you see throughout our plan include these five really high-level messages, performance, experience, equity, family engagement, and perception. These are the consistent themes, the consistent message points that we know resonate from our research with our families, with our staff, and with our kids. So you'll see those used throughout all of our materials and our deliverables when we go through some of the examples here coming up. And also, increasing performance delivering exceptional experiences. Our team in July had a retreat in which we spent an entire day working through creating and grappling with the goals in our plan. At the end, we really landed on, again, from research, from experience, from working through focus groups, families, and students and staff, that these two messages, performance and experience, will resonate with our audiences. Again, briefly, as we get into the goal, this is what we do in our marketing and communications team. On the left-hand side, you see all of the all of the services, all of the platforms, all of the responsibilities that our team holds. And on the right over here, you see all of the outlets and platforms that we manage, that we host, that we contribute to, that we coordinate. Of interest on this right-hand side, wanted you to, again, look at the thirty-eighth spot, KCPS Home Room. We talked a lot about that. In your Friday update this week, you will start seeing data and stats around viewership and analytics around the KCPS Home Room Show. KSHB is now providing those to us, and we want to relay all of those items to you to look at the trends and the cost benefit while we do that daily hourly show that is being so wonderfully and beautifully ran by Justin Robinson. Also note, when you see that data, we are in the eight o'clock time slot, and we compete with the Today Show, with Good Morning America, some of the local news items. We also compete with the Seven Hundred Club, and our audience is outpacing the Seven Hundred Club Show. So that's a tidbit for you. I wanted you guys to be aware of. And then Thought Exchange as well. Thought Exchange is the new platform, crowdsourcing platform that you all as a board approved earlier this year. And that Thought Exchange crowdsourcing platform is a really great new tool for us to engage in that two-way audience, crowd-generated feedback that we can get when we pose a question to our staff and to our families. So Goal One, you can see Goal One here, I'm not going to read it to you verbatim, but Goal One, as with any communications and marketing plan, is that continuous updates, continual internal and external audiences. continual internal and external audiences in connection with them. And then these photographs, these snips that I really put in here are just examples of all the things that we've either implemented or have been doing to reinforce um the school experience and providing looks into what we do here in KCPS. Of note, we have our new website. We have KCPS Home Room. And then on the right lower corner there, you see our voice. Um, this is our new KCPS magazine. This is your first glimpse into the magazine. And want you to see the cover here. It will be delivered to around 100,000 homes um the first part of November. And what has been fun to see through that this first presentation, uh Nathan Story, he's our inside cover uh page, the cover spread about CTE, Real World Learning, Project-Based Learning, and we have three students who we highlight uh to reflect on and talk about and show their experiences with CTE, Project-Based Learning, and their industry-recognized credentials. So excited that that um theme and messages, the message is being resonated through our outgoing publications. Goal two, uh social media. You guys see on every Friday our media analytics that track our social media trends, um track our data as it relates to uh website pages and our social media platforms, our e-news, clickables and um enrollment, enroll, enrollment page. So these are just a cute couple samples that I picked out that are our recent social media pushes. Um, you can see teacher, you can see kids in the culinary program uh inside a school day for virtual learning, um the Vote Ready Campaign. And so what we do in our social media again is create engaging content, but also create informative content. And we know that social media also should be a playground where we have fun and we also have content that resonates, that can be more lighthearted than some of our regular flow of information. Goal three, um involved opportunities, trust, engagement. Uh, we want stakeholders to feel that they are the message deliverers. And so in this goal and our strategies and tactics, you'll see a lot about promoting trust by personal conversations, personal follow-up, being present at community events, being present in schools, making sure that we're customer service oriented for our principals, our secretaries, our teachers and for our families. Goal four, and again, I'm going quickly here, but I want to be brief so that we can answer questions as you have them. So Goal Four, um Student Voice. Student Voice is a big component of our overall comprehensive plan. Student Voice, again, when we get to our research, one of the top reasons people select KCPS schools is because they heard from a family or a student about their own positive experience within our schools. And so we want our kids to help relay their message, help relay their experience to our public so they can see about the goodwill, the good faith, the good natured of us, the good-natured points of what we offer here in KCPS. Again, performance and experience. So again, three, four, five samples here of how we garner and listen to student voice from our Student District Advisory Committee to KCPS Home Room, bringing in several districts to have kids talk to us. The Student Voices of KCPS is um one of the segments in our KCPS Magazine where we ask students the same question and they respond to us in their own words. Um, we have Riley there at Central High talking to us about how important it is to vote and at that voter registration drive, um her experience there on TV, kids weighing in about their first week back to school. And then the, the email there from James McGee, yes, we have students who even email us directly, giving us suggestions, giving us feedback and asking us questions. Goal five, this is pretty straight to the point. Um, and this also encompasses, you know, all of these goals are interconnected, right? I want us to understand that while these goals, there's 10 of them, they all have elements that interconnect and that all again point to that, that theme around our key messages. So this, this is really talking about the look and feel and how user-friendly and accessible all of our items that we produce here in KCPS are. Goal six, media relations. This has been a big topic um within our research that we've looked at. Again, the perception of KCPS within the media has not always been positive. In the past few years, we have changed that narrative and we're still working to change that narrative. Again, in your Friday media analytics, you see all the stories that get covered about KCPS every seven days and we measure the positive, negative, negative or neutrality of those stories. And you will notice that our trends and positive stories far outweigh the negative stories. And the negative stories might even just be a one-off comment that gets picked up in a media story that might not reflect well on the district. So we really gauge those positive, negative and neutrality um stories based upon how we're being portrayed in the public. And we know that again, relationships with media build trust and credibility. You have between Ray Weichel, um myself, between Justin, between several of our members, you have tried, true and trusted um professionals who are with media on an everyday basis, who have these relationships to be able to negotiate, um respond, to be proactive and react. And then here's just some snapshots of um some of the things in the past month or two that we've been um been able to generate from our media relationships. All right, Goal Seven, um this is our equity goal. And you know, Equity, Dr. Davis has his department. You heard from him this evening. You heard from Ms. Win Hernandez, who talked about equity and college access and scholarships. Um, Equity, you know, is spread throughout everything we do with that, with that lens that we look through. So this goal really is to support how we have the conversation about equity in KCPS, how we provide information about our equity initiatives, our equity action items. And so we're really here to support how we convey that message to our public. These snapshots are just two of the things that we help support from Lunch and Learns to educate our staff members and having that conversation internally to Dr. Bedell's piece about um tax incentives and how if we look at the equity lens or equitable, equitable lens, um some things don't really shake out, right? And so how do we shine a light on that? And how do we have that conversation in a larger arena um in places like the Kansas City Star? Uh, um, so Goal Eight, this really lines up with your legislative advocacy conversation that you had um during the first session of our board meeting tonight. So our team supports this work of the board with our legislative advocacy goals, um how we help influence the larger context and how we, you know, in your sentiments, when you've had this discussion a little bit earlier tonight, you really were talking about, you know, public education is the foundation for our community, what we advocate for and how it reflects on not only KCPS, but public education in general across the state and nation. So our team supports this work with you and um provides deliverables that support this work with you. Okay, so Goals Nine and Ten are the, some of the media goals that I think you as board members have some very vested interested. So Goal Nine is Recruiting Plan that showcases positive initiatives um and talk about signature and neighborhood schools to increase perception and enrollment. So in these goals in the documents that you have, we talked about ownership of the pipeline and how we have uh customer relationship management platforms now that track students from um first contact or even before first contact through placement and comfort in our schools. So we are looking at tracking all of that data. We have two new student admissions recruiters who are dedicated to personal contact with our families and strategies for recruitment um as well as perception and enrollment work uh around that idea of recruiting and retaining students. This also um brings up partnerships, our pre-K partnerships um to get more students to matriculate into our kindergarten courses, our kindergarten classes at our schools. And I want you to think about um this goal and the, the tactics and strategies that we gave you. Um, I want you to think about this in the framework of again, when we look at key messages and what we do in our schools, the experiences from positive initiatives, from showcasing what we're doing, um these all contribute to perception that then parlay into increased enrollment when we have targeted people working on this. And then Goal Ten, um want to talk to you. You see our themed message of increasing performance and delivering exceptional experiences here. We know that marketing and communications is only as good as our internal products and the health of what we have to offer. So again, when we look at KCPS, we're looking at this, I want to say transition to marketing our signature schools and our neighborhood schools together. Um, we know that there's benefits to all of our signature and neighborhood schools. And we talked this week as a leadership team, as we open enrollment in December, um early January, as we get all those logistics worked out for our enrollment system, we have a streamlined application that is more user-friendly for our families, more accessible for our families. We want to open up enrollment for both our signature schools and our neighborhood schools at the same time. This means that we're equating our neighborhood schools on the same level as our signature schools and we're trying to umbrella KCPS as one whole organization versus separate tracks for our students. So you'll hear us see, you'll hear us talk about that enrollment application and when we start launching all of the advertising billboards, digital marketing mailers, um that we're doing it in a more systematic overall way versus a spaced-out way between our signature schools, kindergarten enrollment and neighborhood school enrollment. Okay, that was very, very fast. I went through that very quickly. One thing I want to add on that last Goal Ten. Um, you next, next um two weeks, the last board meeting here in October, you're gonna be receiving several contracts from our team and these contracts are gonna very much detail all of the advertising buys that we're getting ready to submit to you for approval. These advertising buys include radio, they include print, and then we're also getting ready to do billboards. You dedicated as a board um funds, um as we went through our budgeting process earlier this year to increase our budget, to have some more initiatives, some more tangible items that we can touch and feel and see um to support our messaging and our marketing. So you're going to see some billboards among the main thoroughfares of KCPS for that larger perception piece. Um, I-35, I-70, 71, you're gonna see us start to really release this increasing performance, delivering exceptional experiences, stories, student voice um through this campaign. And just wanted to bring it to your attention as you get to ready to see and approve um several contracts um at the end of this month. I also want to note that I have several team members on the call with us today. Um, I didn't introduce them again for sake of time, but Justin Robinson, Director of Communications, Lynn Gearing, uh Marketing Manager, Ray Weichel, Public Relations Manager. I have Camila Alvarez, Partners Education Coordinator, and Courtney Adams, our um Parent Engagement Coordinator uh here on the line with us if you have specific questions.
Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to open it up for uh questions to my colleagues. Mr. Barca and then looks like Ms. Cortez.
I, I just want to say, Kelly, entire team, tremendous job. I mean, I, you, the dramatic changes and focuses, um it has just been incredible. So uh thank you for your leadership and for your team's galvanization around you as they're, uh it has truly been amazing work.
Thank you, Mr. Barca.
Ms. Cortez.
So I'm struggling to kind of articulate my question. Um, I, I am not a marketing person, right? So let's start from that. As everybody's figured out, I'm kind of a numbers person, data person. Um, but it, I, I guess I find myself a little bit confused about kind of the, the goal priorities um in terms of kind of focusing on marketing as opposed to focusing on communications pieces, right? If our, if our objective is to, is to, I mean, to me, Goal Nine is Goal One. Um, and so I, I guess I kind of, I kind of find myself going back through what you just presented and saying, okay, if we prioritize, if we're really prioritizing, how do we drive increased enrollment? And I mean, we, we spent a lot of time talking about how we drive increased student success tonight, right? What are the elements of, of programs that drive student success? But how do we, how do we recruit families and what tools are effective in the current environment to do that? And, and frankly, how do we personalize it in a way that really drives that relationship? I guess that's what I'm looking for is how, how do these steps create a relationship between KCPS and the people, the families that we want as students in our school system? And I think I'm, I'm having trouble kind of connecting the dots well.
I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, Ms. Cortez, because you have a lot of goals. You have a lot of information here that we presented. And like you said, there's some interconnectedness and overlap within some of the goals, right? So communications and marketing can be separate things. They can also be very similar things. Um, and you look at, we look at strategies and tactics. To address your question, when you look at some of the tactics within our recruiting plan, um you're gonna see, you know, in the absence of being able to do school tours right now, we're getting ready to embark upon virtual school tours um and executing, making sure that we can provide that virtual tour experience for anyone interested in our, in our schools. Um, you, you also want you to think about, um, you know, last year we had an increase of I think maybe 100 or so students. This year we're seeing a little bit of a decrease in our student enrollment count um due to the nature, I think, of, of COVID, our pandemic, just where we are in the, the current societal context. But we've been holding study and I think you can see also that we've, so we've been holding study in our enrollment. Now we're trying to make sure it takes off and increases versus um decreases. So we look at those strategies that you have, um, team, you guys can pitch in here too if you want. But the personal connections that we've really been struggling with over the past, I think, five, six months. Um, you know, between Camila and Courtney, we've been working on DAC meetings, SAC meetings. We've been working on parent university. We've been working on um PTA meetings and making sure that we're present for those that we're, we're asking them to come, listen to us. People are a little bit fatigued right now, right? They're fatigued with, with video calls or feeling with information overload. And so it's been a little challenge to reach out personally without having access to um people and, and, and presence with them. We have been going to Kids Cafe. We've been going to Swope. We've been going to the library, trying to be present for all of our families who are out and about in these community um, community events. But again, participation is down all across the board. So um Lynn, do you want to add to that? I think I tried, I want to steal your thunder, but some of those events that we've been attending, anything you want to add to that?
Um, just like you said, we've, we're trying to find all of those um key touchpoints where we can in a, in a safe socially-distanced fashion. So the recruiters are going, they did pop in at the park over the summer. They went uh three to four times a week in different areas from the northeast to the southeast, um all of, all into the different neighborhoods. Um, we're also doing, just as Kelly mentioned, um at Swope Health, we're at uh this weekend, we're gonna be at the Anita B. Gordman Center doing um having a table and, and sharing as well. We're continually looking for ways that since we can't have the big activities and get out there and, and be present, we're looking for different ways that we can, we can do that. But it's not just over here, here's my table, here's my swag. It's answering questions. It's building relationships. Oh, are you having problems with your hotspot? Okay, here is the number to IT and they can help you. Oh, it's open this time, this time. Oh, here's my personal number. Call me if you need anything. Uh, parent, parents having problems with enrolling. Yes, let me walk you through that and we're walking them hand by hand through the process. Um, just trying to be very more present and building those relationships as best as we can considering, you know, we're in the land of COVID unfortunately. But our recruiters are doing that in a way that um is as present as we can be considering everything that we're dealing with right now.
I also want to add to that. Um, good question. Um, or good point, Lynn. Our recruiters called every single family who had one um touch point with KCPS, where they started an application for us, whether they had called with interest in KCPS, whether they had looked at her website, whether they had been in one of our pre-K programs. So we made hundreds of calls over the course of the spring and early summer to again personally connect via phone and ask, you know, give us your application. What can we do to help you? Have you made a, have you made a decision yet? How can we help with your decision? And again, getting good feedback on the application process and maybe the cumbersomeness of it. And so that's been a strategy for us too, working with David Rand's team on the enrollment process and streamlining the application process that we can roll out this December to make it a lot easier for our families to go ahead and enroll and, and get placed in our schools.
So I, the, kind of the, the connector that I'm hoping we can, not necessarily tonight, but kind of de- develop a, an understanding of how this connects in is in some of the research, and I can't point my finger to exactly where, that we were doing around Blueprint 2030. Um, how do, how, how do, how do these strategies tie into the things we learned about how families make decisions? And you mean, what the groupers are.
Yeah, which I know you referred to the Hanover, some of the findings in Hanover as you were developing your plan.
That's correct. And what you see in some of that too, Rita, that I've just briefly glazed over, um you'll see some of that more meaty um direct reflection on that research in our overall plan. Again, people want to hear student voice. They want to hear about their experiences. They want welcoming, informative, warm tours of our schools. Um, and they want to be reached out to personally and followed through with personally. So you see some of the elements of that research within our plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Waichel, I'll go ahead unless somebody else has a question right ahead of me. Ms. Wolfsee, go ahead.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm not gonna center my questions on the marketing plan right now. Where I wanted to go was, and I'm sorry, but maybe I just didn't understand. I thought we were doing a 4.1 monitoring update. So I had focused my efforts on looking at 4.1 and kind of understanding what it was we're supposed to be doing there and focusing specifically on two parts of that. Number seven and number 10. Number seven being around systematic manner that we inform parents, students about things going on in the, the schools. And then number 10 mainly around the build out of student and parent organizations, both at the school and at the district level. So, and maybe I need to submit these now separately because I don't think it's fair for you because what, what I was kind of looking for here were, were things such as how, how do you demonstrate that you are, that our families are accessing the information? Like where are they getting their information? How do we know that they're actually engaging with that information? How do we know that the information is actually being understood? And part of my questions are around a lot of the questions I am getting from parents around the district right now, that, that either they're not getting communications because of, and I'm not sure why, this is something that I, I will put in writing about what they're explaining to me about being, making sure their information's in Tyler. They do have, for instance, they know that their principal is sending out information, but for whatever reason, they're not getting it. So I was hoping we would get some sort of update about how systemic, systematically we're making sure that we have systems that ensure that that does happen. So we're in compliance with Board Policy 4.1 slash 7. And that if they are getting it, are they understanding it? Because that's another component that I'm, I don't know if it's that people are just not reading far enough or they're just not understanding it, but that there seems to be a disconnect between what we're sending out and what's being received and understood. And I had a number of other questions. So I'm, I will write these up and I will send them in so that maybe they can be addressed during the Friday update around 4.1 and 7 and 10.
So Ms. Wolfsee, great points. Thank you for bringing those up. And one of the things that we were really cognizant of in addressing 4.1 specifically is that it all got rolled up into that overall plan that you just heard this evening. So specifically when we look at information, all of our platforms, how we communicate, when we communicate, if it's landing on people effectively or if it's landing on people in the ways that we intended to land on people, that's kind of rolled up in some of the goals that we went over and some of the strategies and tactics that we provided in the Friday update overall plan. One of the things I want to maybe, and maybe this is my fault for not delivering the message as clearly as I should be. In our Friday media analytics that we do every week, we certainly track trends on who's reading what, who's engaging with it, what kind of content they like to see, what's more popular for our families. That's by website, by social media, by e-news. And by, it's going to be my KCPS homeroom now. So I think maybe I can do a better job of explaining how those trends and those analytics affect how we adjust and pivot the kinds of information we provide, maybe how it lands on our families. I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for specifically or something a little bit more detailed than that.
A little more detailed, only because I do read the Friday update, so I am familiar with that. But again, I'll put it in writing so that it's more concise and I'll be able to get my questions answered.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Rosserstrom?
Yes, going back about a year, your department worked with Dr. Marvea Jones, who's the Chair of a Committee for Public Relations from the Board. And there was a plan for every board member to go out and talk to community groups once a month. So, you know, I was asked to do it and I did my best to go through a various list of community groups and talk to three or four community groups. But once COVID came up, it seemed like everybody stopped worrying about that. I mean, is there any plans to reinstitute the dialogue between board members and the community groups around Kansas City?
Dr. Jones, do you want to answer that? I'm happy to answer that, but you might be a good colleague to answer that question.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so a few weeks ago, we talked about rolling out another list that would have Zoom links perhaps. So some of those groups, not all of them unfortunately, but many of the groups that we originally listed have transitioned to using web meetings. And so our goal is still to compile, it's sort of a slower process than the original process, but to compile the links to those different meetings. But yeah, that is still a priority.
Good. Dr. Jones, did you have questions? Okay. I had a couple of questions, Ms. Waichel. And then if anyone else needs to have additional, that would be great. I think you may have partly answered the question when to, that in response to Ms. Cortez's questions, I, I wanted to know as you were going through this plan, what information sources did you draw on that helped you understand what families want to know and how, and how they want to receive information? So I know there's various, you know, sets of data that have been collected, but I wanted to just get a little bit better understanding. We have such a broad range of families with a, a wide ranging, varying needs and, and varying ways in which they like. Some people like are all about the social media, give me my information that way. Others may be in some different fashion. But I wanted to just understand better, how did you, what sources did you look at? And, and then, and then that honing in on, how do you then pull out the essence of what they need and want and how they want it, you know, how they want to access that to create a plan? Because I know you have a rich array of tactics here, but I want to understand better about how you understand the family's desires.
Sure. And as you know, we have a lot of platforms that we use to try to garner feedback, to give information, provide to a communication. But again, is diversity of those platforms enough for the diversity of our families and how they like to receive information? So we talked a little bit about Thought Exchange. This was one of our first attempts to kind of crowdsource information versus doing a regular line item survey as we approached the pandemic and COVID-19. So also I wanted, you know, I started in late November, December, January, February, COVID hit. And we really moved into crisis communications mode for the past few months as we looked at our plan and overall marketing strategies for approaching this year. So, so Thought Exchange was one crowdfunding. We also did, I think it was a 2016 report by Patron Insight that came in and did some research on our community, our audiences. And that was kind of in the form of a communication audit. I'm not against doing another communication audit where we ask families how they want to receive information, what's their most viewed platform, you know, all of that. But again, that's us going out to our families and asking them to do something for us. We're interested in how to make it easier for our families to interact with us without them having to exude much effort. Because we know that everyone's busy, it's noisy right now. People are focused on just their learning model and logging on to their classes every day. So we can do a communication audit to that, but we also again, track all that from our professional lenses and expertises to talk to our families through, through DAC, talk through students, through student advisory, look at PTA meetings, look at link after school care programs. But also want to say that we know that these communities are kind of burned out right now. They're tired, they're consistently the ones who give us feedback, who provide us the pulse of the community, a certain segments of our parents. And so we are looking at every family who has contacted us through the Let's Talk app, through our communications email, through Dr. Bedell's email, through the board email in the past, we're trying like three months, we're collecting all those contacts to ask them to engage with us and provide more feedback on a regular basis through, whether it's next tier membership, membership of DAC or it's a next tier PR advisory committee that talks to us about messaging and talks to us about how things are landing on them. So we're looking at different ways to again, personally connect with those families who don't usually engage with us. That's a brief answer. I could probably provide you some more documentation in the Friday update as well.
And I think the other, the other thing I would probably ask at this time is, we know that, I think some of the research we've done that we've had through Hanover and other things, we know that parents want to, they like the connection to their school, right? That, that's kind of emerged. They, they tend to look to their fellow families and their school leader or principal as maybe their first go-to. You know, when they don't understand something, they don't typically come to a central office source, they tend to go there. So I'm, I'm, I think, you know, we, we have the, I don't need to know now, but I'd like to have a better sense of how we activate and maintain our SAC as an Information Distribution Network SACs within our schools and schools that have been lagging and getting active SACs up and going. I know it's hard to do during COVID, but technology also maybe is an avenue that could improve that because before you relied on families getting up from their home or leaving their job and driving to their school. Now you may be able to tap them in a different way. So maybe at a future time in a Friday update, I'd like to have a sense of SAC and the activation there. And if schools that have not, have been sort of delayed and building an active SAC over the last couple of years, you know, if you're seeing increases in numbers of those, kind of like we saw how avid, you know, grew, grew, grew. So I think that would be an area of interest. And it's not really a question, but I, but I do believe that we have kind of, you have ongoing challenges, I recognize, in communications for a diverse set of families. And we have a significant growing number of families who are non-native English speakers, very large proportion of them Spanish language speakers. And so it'll be helpful to really understand, and those are families who also act on choice too, fairly actively and may not, and have, may not always know about the options within our system. And we've got amazing options. I mean, even listening to the college and career readiness stuff tonight, the work that is underway is fantastic. So just to understand a little bit better how we really do the kind of engagement with those families to help them see the excellence, the opportunity and student experience. Because traditional modes, I'm not sure, are going to get to those families. So that's just some thoughts on this. Thank you. Are there other comments or questions that board members have for this evening? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Waichel, and thank you, Dr. Bedell. I know you have one more slide to walk through, I believe. Oops, and you are muted.
I did put it on mute because I was choking earlier. I know Manny, I know. Can you, Joe, can you put up the final slide? If it's not there, let me just read to you what we have, what David has. Okay, so these are the items for action that, that we're asking the board to take action on in two weeks in our business meeting. The Head Start Amendment of $343,584. The Worldwide Technology Contract in the amount of $421,610. And then the ACI Bowlin Construction Company, which is the Woodland Phase One Renovations in the amount of $493,970. That concludes the business action items for next, for, for the next business meeting, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Thank you to everyone who both presented and participated this evening and for the, any community members that joined us. Our next board meeting is October 28th. For the public, you can access the materials from this night, this evening's presentation on Symbly, which is our board documents system, which is available to the public online. You're able to access all of these PowerPoints. And of course, these meetings are taped and people can go back and, and watch and listen. So we appreciate all of you for joining us and appreciate, Dr. Bedell, the work of your team. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for this evening. So if there is no objection, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.